Start. Let's call the meeting to order, City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director Mann.
Present.
Marcus. Cilio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, the invocation will be Pastor Joe Sweet from, is it Shekinah Worship Center? Shekinah Worship Center, I'm sorry. You're over on 10th Street, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I drive by every morning.
Father in heaven, we thank you that we can gather in this place and have this meeting. We thank you that every good and every perfect gift comes from you, the Father of Lights, from whom there's no variable of change or shadow of turning. And now, Lord, we ask that in your merciful goodness, you would pour out wisdom and guidance upon this meeting. We ask for clear communication. We ask for understanding. We ask, Lord, that you would guide what takes place so that the result of this meeting would result in righteousness and justice and a better welfare for this city. We ask it in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Vice Mayor Smith, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sherry, do you want to introduce the student speaker? Or do you have it?
Tonight's student speaker is Armando Carlos from Parkview School. And is Armando here?
Good evening. My name is Armando, and today my subject is pride in America. What are your feelings of America? We know that we have enemies who hate our country, but it is not unusual to hear our own people being critical of America. Sometimes even some of our elected officials publicly speak out critically of our nation. But those of us who are proud of our country understand that it is not perfect, just as people are not perfect. But we believe that there is a basic goodness in our people which continues to influence the development of an even better society. Many of our people make no apology for their patriotism. A few years ago, Lee Greenwood inspired our nation with a song entitled, "I Am Proud to Be an American." It reminded us of the advantages of being free people. Earlier, a song by Merle Haggard expressed his respect for the American flag and for the country itself. He went so far as to say, "When you're running down our country, you're walking on the fighting side of me." It is easy to be critical, but hopefully, we will all be proud of our country and dedicate ourselves to making it better. Thank you.
Come on down with me. We're going to do your award right after. So you might as well come on down. You look different than in the movies. Come on. You want to? Who's going to? No. Yeah. You're going to do it. Come over here. Thank you. Tonight, we're going to be swearing in Jim.
Capel?
Capel. That's right. For the Criminal Justice Commission. You all know Jim from Channel 3. He's the one who goes after all the parolees. What do you get, about 500 of them so far? And Jim actually is going to round out the Criminal Justice Commission. We don't have anyone from parole, so this is a perfect fit. We've actually been holding the seat for you, and so I'm glad you finally filled it. Okay. And with that, we're going to go ahead and have you sworn in.
Tilt this just a little bit. If you want to step a little closer, okay? If you please raise your right hand and repeat your name when you start. I.
I, James Capel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the.
Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will.
Bear.
I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitutions of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties of about which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I do need to say.
Jim, on behalf of the City of Lancaster, I'd like to give you my hearing aid.
Well, tonight, you know, twice now, we've given out the Lewis v. Bozegian Gift of the Arts Award. And what we were trying to do is to not just give it to people who are artists, but those that actually spread the arts to the community. And so tonight, we have somebody that's well deserving of it. And so let me read all the whereas's. It's to Dr. David Newby. Has been the artistic director of the Combined Antelope Valley Symphony Orchestra and Master Chorale since 1998. Dr. Newby has been a professor of music at Antelope Valley College since 1989, directs the orchestral and choral programs, and oversees the Association, the Associate of Arts and Music Degree Program. Dr. Newby has directed five symphony and master chorale performances at ALPAC every year since the facility opened in 1991. And if you haven't been to one of them, they're amazing, including the very first classical concert at the new venue. Dr. Newby has also conducted at the Aspen School of Music, served as assistant conductor for the Peoria Civic Opera, served as director of vocal and chorale music at Culver Military Academy, music director of the Summer Opera Theater at Indiana University, and performed as a finalist in the Skerritt Conducting Competition. Dr. Newby has made a significant contribution to the advancement of the arts and culture in Lancaster through his donation of time, skill, knowledge, and his promotion of the musical arts. It's, I've known David for a number of years and just seen what he does. There's people who do their job, and then there's people who do their job and extra and extra and are just because of their passion for it. And David Newby is one that has a passion for the arts and the music, and he's well deserving for the continuation of the spreading of the arts to our community. So, Dr. Newby?
Are you still doing the Lancaster Symphony thing?
Absolutely.
You know, I attended that last year where Dr. Newby gives a presentation before the orchestra performs, and you learned more about music than I had in my entire life up until then, all within an hour. It's something you really want to go to if you haven't seen it. Thank you. Thank you. Is Jennifer Dilger here? Come on down here. This is the most amazing woman. I mean, amazing. First of all, I'd like to say that she goes to Quartz Hill, and her GPA is 4.6. Wow, yeah. I had a 2.6 once. But on top of that, but on top of that, she has the, the, what's, let's see. Leading Quartz Hill to its 10th consecutive Golden Lake Golf Championship while maintaining a career 4.6. Jennifer Junior was the only female golfer to shoot under par during the Golden Lake play in 2009. She shot par or better at two of the three Golden Lake courses in 2009, won the league's two-day CIF qualifying tournament for 14 strokes. Could you imagine shooting par? I mean, I'd cut off my little finger to shoot par. Whereas Jennifer had two top-10 finishes at the American Junior Golf Association All-Star Tournaments and two top-three finishes at the Junior Amateur Golf Scholar, Scholars Tournaments, she advanced to the CIF Southern Section Individual Finals for her second consecutive year. She is currently talking to Furman University, Oregon State University, Baylor University, I know somebody there could help you out, Southern Methodist University, was it Wolford? College Coastal Carolina University, Radford University, Winthrop University, Georgetown University. Absolutely. University of Illinois, and James Madison University. On behalf of Lancaster City Council, I commend Jennifer Dilger for her outstanding accomplishments athletically, scholastically, and in the community. Thank you. We also, we also have the Mayor Scholarship. It's $1,000. Now, can't we give this to her for her grade point and not get beyond the CIA?
We'll look into that. We just need to make sure about NCAA regulations, so.
See, that's the problem. If we can get it to you, we'll get it to you, okay? And it's 1,500 if you go to Georgetown. I mean, let's face it, people from Georgetown rule the world.
And come back to Lancaster.
Who did that? Did you go to Georgetown?
Of course not.
Oh. Oh, you want her to come back to Lancaster. Okay. All right. I'm on page now. Is Vladimir here yet? Okay, interrupt me as soon as he gets here, would you? Okay, thank you. Okay, now it's your, you're up, Mark.
Mayor and council members, it's real pleasure today to announce, and it's already been announced in the paper, that Lancaster was selected in the top four of the best places to work in Los Angeles County by the San Fernando Business Journal, the city of Lancaster. Out of over 100 public and private organizations in the large category, we were number four with Wells Fargo, Kaiser Permanente, and Providence Holy Cross. I'm very, very proud to work for the city of Lancaster. We have an incredible staff. During the economic downturn, they've worried about doing their jobs, not about their jobs, and they've done a really good job of even stepping it up with, with less resources. The mayor talks a lot about a happiness quotient. We have a lot of things we work on that are very serious, but this is a fun place to work. It's a good place to work. It's an energized place to work, and the council is a big part of that. Leadership matters. And so on behalf of the staff, we'd like to thank you for helping us be named one of the top places in Los Angeles County to work. Thank you.
Thank you. So how do we get to number one? We're working on that. What were the, what did they measure?
There's information you have to provide, turnover information and such. They also looked at the, how much is being paid. They looked at certain things like compensation. They also looked at what you do. They also looked at some of the satisfaction surveys. They talked to employees as well, too. Just a host of things. I don't have all of them in front of me.
You know, Mark gives us the credit because, well, we know why he gives us the credit, but the reality, it's these folks here that make this the great place to work, and it really is a great place to work. It's an exciting place. It's a place where people who are creative are recognized for that creativity, and we've kind of opened the doors to welcome that. And I think that's the reason for the change, more than anything. Now, if we could pay them what they were worth, then we'd be number one. Okay. In 2006, the city commenced a major revision of its general plan intended to provide a blueprint for the growth and development of the city to the year 2030. A major step in the general plan revision effort was the work of the General Plan Advisory Committee, which formulated a draft plan designed to address major issues identified by residents and stakeholders of the city of Lancaster. The Advisory Committee was also involved in this intensive effort, which included establishing a long-range vision, the weighing of alternatives, and consideration of trade-offs during numerous meetings and discussions between January and December of 2007. The preferred plan created by the General Plan Citizen Advisory Committee serves as the conceptual basis for the general plan adopted by the city council on July 14, 2009. Each committee member has contributed his or her time and talent and demonstrated dedication and commitment to the long-term health and vitality of the city of Lancaster. It is, you know, I've been through two of these, what, 20 years ago, the first one, and that was a different experience than this, this experience in that by the time the general plan was approved, there was almost no controversy except for that little wrinkle on the West Side. But other than that, meaning Walmart for those of you who missed it, other than that, which wasn't anything you guys did, which was what we did, the rest of the city was extremely happy with, with the general plan. There was no controversy in it. Every voice was heard. It was truly a remarkable document that was prepared, and it's a credit to all of you. And so with that, I would like Jim Dotson, Darren Parker, Richard Wood, Raj Malley, David Sinclair, Cecil Swetland, and Val Holt to come forward. I'm reading a book on the, the value of diversity, meaning functional diversity, different views, different ideas, and all that you get when you bring diverse groups together. And this is really an example of that. It was truly a remarkable accomplishment. Jim? That's you, right? Val? We haven't met by long. Raj? Raj is currently on the Planning Commission. Parker, we all know Darren. David Sinclair, where's David? David's not here. He shows up for the walk with the mayor, and he doesn't show up for his award. Cecil Swetland? And Richard Wood. Richard Wood has been coming to the Planning Commission back when I was on the Planning Commission over 20 years ago. That's how long he's been involved in the development of this city. Thank you. And thank you very much for your efforts. Oh, yeah, they told him you were in that. Now we have Vern Lawson.
Mayor and council, we have a brief presentation tonight that'll kind of bring you up to date on the economic stimulus package that you approved back last February. This is a presentation I had the pleasure of giving at the National Economic Development Council annual meeting this year, and it's something that I think's been very successful. I want to say upfront that this is a pure total city involvement. I couldn't be more proud of all the participation from all the departments, and as we go through this, I think, I think you'll see that. But we'll just take a couple of minutes because I know you have a long agenda tonight. We've called it demand-driven economic development. As we get into this, I'll kind of explain why. Take you back to February of 2009, which, you know, isn't even a year ago. We had an economy that had been hit very, very hard by the recession. We had 17% unemployment rate in our city, and that number still is about that level, so I wouldn't infer for a second that we fixed all of our problems. 14% decline in assessed valuations with housing. Retail sales were down over 20%. We had construction down over 47%. We had our auto sales tax down over 50%. We had over 1,250,000 square feet of vacant space in the town. This was a combination of industrial and retail space. We knew that the next thing to suffer would be our public revenues, obviously. I think it's been said that as good, as business goes in Lancaster, so goes the city of Lancaster, and of course, that's why we were particularly concerned. We knew that we needed to turn our economy around, and we wanted to do something quickly. The feds debated, and I think recent newspaper articles have indicated that the whole stimulus package in the Antelope Valley, you know, wasn't all that substantial as far as total dollars spent, but particularly wasn't all that substantial in the city of Lancaster. The solution that we came up with, with your direction, was to create our own stimulus. And obviously, we needed a bridge over this chasm that, you know, our economy had become. The program, as I think you're familiar with, did get us a little national publicity. We had a terrific article in the NBC Nightly News. We also had Katie Couric do a piece on this, and that national notoriety really allowed us to make a presentation to the State of California group called California Association of Local Economic Development, and the national folks saw that, and I was invited to present this at the national meeting. The focus is on what we have referred to in our department as demand-driven economic development. We have kind of a realization that in years past, we used to work hard, for example, with the hotels that we've gotten put in the city, put in the infrastructure, got them open, and then we pretty much, that would be it. You know, we, we got the development going. What we now recognize is that doesn't make any sense at all. We have to focus on the demand that those hotels are going to experience, and in fact, later on tonight, you'll be taking an action to involve a member of the hospitality industry. And really, we've created longer-term partnerships and kind of a whole new way of thinking about economic development in the city of Lancaster. We know we needed to encourage more consumer spending. I think the mayor made a good point at the press conference for our shop local that really, it's kind of a loyalty test for Lancaster, and I think there's an awful lot of people that are now thinking about when they go to purchase something, and we should try to do it first in our city because we're really here to help our friends and neighbors. It's not just a click of a mouse that is convenient, but we want to make sure that, that we're working with the people that support us. The stimulus package was temporary, timely, and targeted. Temporary, obviously, because most of the programs have already been finished. Timely, because we jumped on it immediately. In fact, I remember presenting in February, we were thinking we'd get talking about April 15, and we had a meeting with the car dealers, and they said, "No, how about March 1st?" So we started immediately, and of course, we targeted to very specific industries. I'm proud to tell you that we ended up with over $25 million in new car sales in the shop-and-drive program. That's almost 800 cars that were sold because of this. We had 400 merchants participate in the program to take the gift cards. This was created brand-new, and are continuing that relationship. We have all the emails of these merchants, and I couldn't be prouder of all the merchants in Lancaster that stepped up to participate. We ended up distributing over 5,300 gift cards. So if you take the people that bought cars and the people that got gift cards, we had almost 6,000 families participate in this program. To give you a metric, that's about 10% of all the households in the city of Lancaster. So in a pretty short period of time, we really had a profound impact. I was most impressed, though, the last day of the program, we had 1,300 people show up at Lancaster City Hall to cash in their gift card. And I think kind of for the first time in my professional life, I was able to go eyeball to eyeball with our constituents, the people that waited a long time in line and had brought in their, their receipts, sometimes many, many receipts to get to $300 to get the $30 gift card. And the entire city showed up at that counter. I mean, department heads, all the way through the staff to, to help work that. It was really a great team effort. The good news, and we've gone through and looked at these, these numbers and recognized that this isn't new cash, but economic impact. We originally thought we would have about $110 million in economic impact. It actually looks like more, $123 million in economic impact, for two reasons primarily. Number one, we had the shop-and-drive and shop-and-dine program go quite a bit over the impact because we ran it a little longer than we thought. But additionally, since that time, the council stepped up and made a commitment to build a new downtown Lancaster, and you made a commitment for $8 million into the downtown. So all told, the economic impact is $123 million, which isn't half bad for the middle of the worst recession we've had in a long time in this town. The merchant assistance program continues. Those relationships are evolving. When you look at what's happening in downtown Lancaster, pretty incredible. You wouldn't really know much of a recession's going on down there. Restaurants are opening up. We've got new people that want to open new restaurants, and we're proud to say, you know, there aren't any existing restaurants in Lancaster that are vacant in downtown, so we may have to create some new ones. But I think the enthusiasm that your leadership has created allowed this to occur. Hospitality sector, we, of course, have stepped up, and you know, and seen the presentation on the Convention and Tourism Bureau. We think we're just scratching the surface there. The deeper we get into that, the more we feel that that can be an entirely, entirely new source of revenue for you that can go ahead to expand our tax base. Destination Lancaster was a great example of an event, a real event that happened that had terrific economic impact, and, you know, we'll see that in years to come, again in downtown. $10 million in infrastructure, that's the addition that we've added into the downtown. Liz's shop has done over 100 foreclosed homes that were rehabbed, all of the subs that worked on this program. You know, if you're a tile layer or a painter, you were pretty happy to see the city of Lancaster step up and do this in the middle of a recession. Shovel-ready product, projects, we continue to push those and recognize that there'll be another round of funding coming up that we want to be ready to roll on. The Developer Broker Assistance Program, we now have four or five different entities that have stepped up, and you'll be seeing some announcements come pretty quick, but the brokerage community has really participated. Revenue enhancements, kind of a whole laundry list of different things, like a city store that we've done. A couple of the programs, we have not had a chance to start yet, but the $123 million impact doesn't count those programs, and as time allows, we will go ahead and put those together. Finally, we've gained some notoriety. I think the city of Lancaster, I know on a national basis, is, is recognized. I mean, when Brian Williams and Katie Couric show up to notice what's going on at Little Lancaster, other cities do, too. We've been inundated with requests from all over the nation about, "How'd you do that?" And of course, my staff and the rest of the staff of City Hall literally just took ideas and turned them into real programs. The finance department did a terrific job. We simply couldn't have done any of this without the support of everybody in City Hall. I think we've created a new sense of community. I still see those stickers up in businesses, even though the program's technically over, and I kind of think that maybe, to be accurate, they ought to take them down, and then I kind of think the pride that they're still up and participating, and I think that's, that's what that means. So that's, that's been very successful. We still have a couple of challenges. As this indicates, there are friends up in Sacramento who've decided that we need to send them a check for $20 million bucks. The good news is that $17.5 million is due this May, and we can wait an entire year before the other $3.5 million is, is due. Of course, we've sued over that, and we're hopeful about that, but, you know, this is something that isn't occurring in every state in the Union. We're looking at new funding sources, maybe some parking revenues in downtown, as we mentioned the Convention and Tourism, looking at some federal grants to create some buildings that could give us extra rental income. But it really, it's a completely different way to think of how we do economic development in the city of Lancaster. Finally, we're pushing ahead, a year ahead of schedule, actually, to redo the Antelope Valley Enterprise Zone, which is a major incentive in consort with our friends to the South in Palmdale. And then, at that meeting, I'm proud to tell you that you won the top award for the marketing program for promotional brochures. There's about 482 different cities that submitted stuff, actually on an international basis, and you were the top award for promotion, all the stuff that was put together. I had to laugh because when I made this presentation, I came after a gentleman from Toronto who spoke, and of course, they had a pretty impressive program, as you might expect the city of Toronto to do. He said, he laughed during the question session, he said that, you know, "It's funny, in Canada, you accuse us of being socialist. Well, we've never had a gift card that we gave anybody and sent them back to, to speak, you know, or shop in our city." So I think even, even he was impressed, and good guy. So it's been my pleasure, and I certainly am just up here talking about this because there isn't anybody in City Hall that didn't make this happen, and that's about 10 minutes worth.
Nine and a half, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vern, no, you're not going to win.
Okay.
You, you have done a remarkable, remarkable job.
Oh, well, thank you.
I can't tell you how impressed we are with your department. It is, it is beyond all of our expectations for, for anybody. You've performed above that. It's, the, the, the level of creativity and intellect that you have working for you is, I mean, it's really thrilling to be around them, and I want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much.
You've done a wonderful job.
If anything, every single, Mr. Bozegian, every single department should take note of this, that that's what a PowerPoint should look like.
Yes, Vern has reminded us. Vern has reminded us several times. Vern has, he and his department have done very good at PowerPoint as well, too.
We've come a long way in the PowerPoint department.
Yes, we have. They don't let me, they don't let me touch it. That was the biggest thing.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
If I might, Mayor, I'd like to reiterate what Vern said. It really was the entire staff that had to implement this, because ideas without implementation are nothing. And every single department went above and beyond. One of the best days I've ever had at the city was the last day of the gift card program, watching everyone do something at the counter, copy ad receipts with a smile on their face, 1,300 people. It was really remarkable. It was, it was invigorating, so thank you to the entire staff.
And everybody in Lancaster is going to be required to take the loyalty oath to Shop Lancaster. Vladimir, are you here?
I scared him. Talking here. But I want everybody to see. This is Vladimir Barrera. He is 10 years old. He witnessed a burglary at his grandfather's apartment complex. He, he was very courageous in giving a detailed description to the deputies of the burglary suppression team. That's those guys up there, right? Are you friends with him? Good. He described not only the race, hair color, facial hair, height, build of the suspect, but was able to recall the color of the suspect's T-shirt and his distinct business name that was on it. He immediately identified the suspect and the van he saw the suspect drive away in on the day of the burglary from a photographic lineup. He was asked to testify by the district attorney's office. He, he did, you did testify, right? He is a great role model, not only to their children, but to adults as well. He did exactly what we asked the public to do in order to rid crime from our city, and imagine the courage of a 10-year-old to do that. You are an incredible guy. Right over there. And would your parents come down?
And the bird suppression team, maybe?
And yeah, bring, you guys come down too. And you see that lady up there, Natalia? She's going to take you on a shopping trip for Christmas. It's going to cost $500 for your Christmas.
This is not your father's Lancaster. Isn't this wonderful, what's happening? It just blows me away. Okay, all speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on a non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City manager, on the redevelopment agency, anything to be removed?
Not on the agency.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the agency's consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Can we vote on just raising our hands?
It's your meeting.
We got to remove CC 11 on the consent calendar.
Mayor Paris.
And CC 12.
And CC 12 and 13.
Okay, I'm going to recuse myself on CC 11, because apparently it involves a, a client of ours, the offices.
CC 12 and 13, I have a property that is located on Beach Avenue.
If there's no other removals, I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the vice mayor.
Let the record reflect that the mayor's left the room and turned the chair over to me. Do I hear any motions on CC 11? Move adoption CC 11?
Second that.
Call for a vote.
It's unanimous with the mayor recusing himself. Let the record reflect that the mayor's re-entered the room, and I'll turn the chair back over to him.
And Councilman Mann has left the room. And is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt CC 12.
I'll second that.
Why don't we do CC 12 and CC 13 at the same time?
It's, they were both in the room. Sorry, sorry. CC 12 and 13.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous with Mr. Mann recusing himself. Mr. Mann, you can return. Okay, let's open the public hearing on item number one of the joint public hearings, and we'll hear from Elizabeth Brubaker, Housing Director.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and City Council members. On July 24th, 2001, the City Council directed staff to undertake actions necessary to implement and complete the approved North Downtown Transit Village. One significant component of the removal of blight and revitalization of the North Downtown was the development of learning and skill enhancement opportunities. Several stakeholders, including Sacred Heart, participated in development of the North Downtown Transit Village project. During the mid and late 1990s, Sacred Heart's school enrollment was increasing, and in looking towards the future, Sacred Heart determined that there was a need to expand their school. Sacred Heart's desire was to provide residents of Lancaster an opportunity to attend a private school with an open enrollment for all denominations. Sacred Heart attempted to find another location to relocate the school to no avail. Sacred Heart decided they wanted to remain in their current location and become a primary stakeholder in the efforts to revitalize the North Downtown. The North Downtown Transit Village project has provided for the elimination of blight, construction of affordable housing, relocation of several social service organizations into one area, improvement of educational opportunities, and improvement of retail restaurant opportunities for area residents. The agency is proposing to dispose of vacant land consisting of approximately 159,300 square feet for fair market value to the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Los Angeles for the expansion of the existing campus. The agency, as part of this North Downtown Transit Village revitalization process, acquired and demolished blighted structures in preparation of the implementation of various projects. The school is privately operated and has an open enrollment for citizens of all denominations. Sacred Heart will construct and rehabilitate the school campus in phases as they obtain funds and financing. Staff is recommending the, the adoption of Resolution Number 09-114 of the City Council and Resolution Number 28-09, a resolution of the Lancaster Redevelopment Agency approving the disposition and development agreement between the Lancaster Redevelopment Agency and the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Los Angeles.
Thank you. We have one speaker card. Do we have any communications, City Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Dr. Tom Baker? Father Tom Baker. Well, I got the R. I mean, you know, they abbreviate what's...
Good evening. I just want to take the...
Wait a minute, before he starts, do you know he's a triathlete?
Triathlete, yes.
How many triathlons have you done?
Hmm, 60-some.
Wow.
That's not why I'm here.
I know. I never met a triathlete before, so I had to say something. He's looking for athletes of the month.
I've met you before.
No, I met you, but you're the only one I've ever met. You realize that means you're the only one that does that sort of thing that I've ever met?
I don't know. Anyways, but I do want to thank the city of Lancaster, those who've worked to help make this project move forward. Our, our church has been in Lancaster since 1890, the downtown area, and we really wanted to stay here and help in the revitalization, but we're growing as well as the city is, and so we needed more land, and that's able to move forward. So I, I want to thank the city. I want to also thank my building committee members and fundraising committee that have attended tonight as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you. So can I, like, trade my vote for him helping us with the city marathon? We want to do a Lancaster...
Just to talk privately.
I guess I can't do that. Any discussion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 28-09.
And it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
We have one other resolution that needs to be adopted. Okay, we'll adopt Resolution, yeah, it's a joint public hearing. Thanks. Resolution Number 09-114.
All right, by a raise of hands, all in favor? Oh, okay, good. I was impatient. Okay, thank you. It's, it's done. Great. This is, you know, this is a, this is an amazing partnership that's going to develop an incredible facility all around the City Hall area there. I hope other cities start doing the same thing. It's interesting to me that we had to do it with private schools instead of public schools, because it really is a model that we should be doing with everyone where we have joint facilities like this. But you guys were kind of the pioneers in this. Thank you. Okay, JPH 2.
We have no speaker's cards. Mr. Mayor, we can waive the...
Okay, let's waive it. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Numbers, Number 2909.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can't we take those concurrently?
Can we take them concurrently? Is that okay? Two agencies? Is that fine, Mr. McCune?
Or do we have to have a separate vote?
Separate vote, I think. You need separate votes, because one's the city and one's the agency.
That was me.
It's unanimous.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution for the city, Number 09-115. Second that.
You know, Jerry, I'm sure glad you're not launching the shuttle. Okay, let's go to J, oh, it's unanimous, let's go to JPH 3.
There's no speaker cards on that one either.
Yeah, but I want to hear about it. You're not getting off that easy. I mean, you know, this is progress. Let's hear about it.
It is. This is real good progress, too.
Let's celebrate it.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and City Council members. Agency staff for several years has been acquiring property in the area between Third Street and Fifth Streets East, north of Avenue I, to redevelop blighted areas and revitalize neighborhoods. To date, the agency has assembled a group of contiguous parcels in an area referred to as the Paiute Master Vision Plan. In January 2004, agency and county staff met to discuss the county's efforts to find a site in Lancaster to better serve local residents by developing a new state-of-the-art multi-specialty ambulatory care center, which I will refer to as the MAC. The area described above was a perfect site for the county and city to serve the citizens of Lancaster. Entering into the agreements with the County of Los Angeles will help to eliminate blight both in the redevelopment project area and more focused Paiute neighborhood revitalization area. Efforts to develop the MAC will also increase the employment opportunities within the area, generate additional property taxes through the development of adjacent parcels with which the community can assist in providing an environment for the social, economic, and psychological growth and well-being of the citizens in one of the more blighted areas of the older sections of the city. The agency is proposing to transfer vacant land for the sum of $1,253,400, the fair market value previously established by an independent appraisal. The estimated cost for the new facility was approximately $98.8 million, which includes an ambulatory surgery center, clinical services building, central plant, administrative support building, and buildings for medical support services. Staff is recommending the adoption of Number 09-116 of the City Council and Resolution Number 30-09, a resolution of the Lancaster Redevelopment Agency approving the proposed option and sale agreements that would transfer real property, APN 3176005-920, 3176-010-900 through 923, 3176009-900 through 919, and 3176010-900-23, to the County of Los Angeles for development of a new multi-specialty ambulatory care center within the Paiute Master Vision Plan area.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? Any comments?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 30-09.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous.
And for the city, I'll recommend that we move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-116.
It's unanimous. Moving on to public hearing item number one, we'll hear from Public Works Director Robert Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards, no communication of that.
Okay, we can waive it if you want.
Yep, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Okay. It's Christmas, Robert.
You don't look as sad as Randy used to, you know?
I'll, I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-117.
Mayor Paris, I was going to recuse myself, because I'm employed at Lancaster Baptist Church, and it has to do with this.
Oh, okay.
I will second that motion.
So I'll just stand here?
No, you got to go up in the back. No, you got to go up in the back. And it's unanimous with Councilperson Marcus recusing herself. And she can come back? Public hearing item number two is being taken off the agenda for—rescheduled for a future date. Public hearing item number three, we'll now hear from Brian Ludicki, our planning director.
Mayor Paris and members of the City Council, you will hear from me briefly, but quite a bit of the presentation is going to be from one of the members of the Architectural and Design Planning Commission, as well as Sylvia Donovan, principal planner with the planning department. The issue that's before you is consideration and hopefully potential adoption of architectural and design guidelines that have been recommended to you by the Architectural and Design Planning Commission. I'd like to take just a brief moment to introduce and acknowledge all of those people. A number of them are here. The members of that commission include Commissioner April Bartlett, Commissioner Courtney Stallworth, Commissioner Matt Buchanan, Commissioner Sean Donlin, and Commissioner Timothy Wiley, as well as the vice chair of the commission, Randy Hall, and the chairperson of the commission, Diana Cook. This is really an exciting time. I've been employed at the City of Lancaster in the planning department since 1984. There have been a number of occasions where either the planning commission, or the city council, or in some cases, staff have considered the possibility of looking at a comprehensive set of design guidelines for the city. In all of those instances, we never got to this point, where they were actually now in front of you for your consideration. These design guidelines have the potential to chart a brand-new course for how this city looks and develops. It will let the development community know definitively what we are looking for as a city and how we expect our community to look, and what their part in that will be. We are even at this point, within the staff, working on the development of modifications to our overall development codes to meet the policies that were adopted in the general plan back in July. These guidelines will be an important part of informing how those will be created and done, and as we do that work over the next year, the concepts and requirements that are contained within these guidelines will also be incorporated into those development codes. I have, as I indicated, a couple of other people that are going to talk to you about the process that was followed in creating these guidelines, as well as the—an exposition of the guidelines themselves. I'd like to introduce to you Matt Buchanan, who, as I indicated before, is one of the commissioners on the Architectural and Design Planning Commission.
That's a good—
You hear the PowerPoint?
I'm good.
Well, I think this is important enough, if you don't mind. They had to go get the second one. We might want to take a two-minute break, if that's okay?
Yeah, this is one of the most important things we've done in the entire year.
My slide doesn't really have anything, if you want to—while they're loading it. Okay. I mean, I can begin, because my slide's just an outline of the overview of the process. You won't miss anything graphically, I don't think, at this point. So if you want to just continue, we can—and then if—yeah. So, good evening. Like Brian said, we're all very excited to be at this stage of the program, to be able to bring these guidelines before the council for—hopefully for approval. Well, my role here is to explain to you a little bit about the process that the commission was engaged with over the last about year and a half. The first step in the process was that we had to educate the commission as a whole with regards to the general design concepts and terminologies, so that everyone on the commission could communicate on an equal level with staff and each other, and increase the level of understanding of the issues that we would be discussing, because, as you can see, we came from a very broad range of backgrounds, and not all of them are design or construction-oriented. The education was accomplished largely through presentations from staff, from multiple departments within the city, to bring them up to speed on the terminology and these concepts that the city was interested in achieving through these guidelines. We also went on numerous field trips, both around the city and to neighboring cities, to see some of these concepts and how they've been applied successfully there, independent research by each of the commissioners, and even presentations from a representative from the BIA at the time came in to discuss some of the important things from their perspective. The next step that we took was to closely review several model documents that had already been developed and in use from cities in both California and Arizona. These were selected based on their similarity to Lancaster in both climate, growth patterns, images, and lifestyle that we saw from those communities. The commission's primary focus was on the guidelines from Santa Clarita, Palm Springs, Temecula, Tucson, and Scottsdale. Our review of these documents focused on the quality of content, organization of the document, and the ease of use and graphic representation. Once that research was completed, the commission felt it important, before going any further, to develop our mission statement, because without that, we had nothing to measure our work by. So the mission statement that we, after kind of churning through all the issues and everything, and kind of came up with that we felt best exemplified the overall intent of the guidelines in serving the interests of our community, was to establish standards for all development by implementing quality design for timeless architecture that enhances the community's image, pride, and quality of life. So throughout—from that point forward, throughout the development of the specific guidelines, the commission would regularly return back to this mission statement as a benchmark, to make sure that everything we were doing related back to the goals of that mission statement. The guidelines are organized into five sections, as you'll see as we go through some of the slides, and those are the all-development section, which are the general design concepts and principles that relate to all forms of development, regardless of project type. They're more universal in nature. And then it's broken up into subsections of residential development, commercial development, mixed-use development, and industrial development, and each of those expand upon the all-development section with criteria that's specific to the intended use of that development. And then after that point, each of those sections is broken down further into the areas of site design and building architecture form and character. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sylvia to expand on some of the highlights of those guidelines.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here tonight to present this to you.
And you're on time, too, by the way.
I was going to say that, yes. On time.
You met the deadline, that's wonderful.
We did. The whole committee worked really hard to get to this point, so I hope you're happy with what we did.
I'm ecstatic.
All right.
This is me ecstatic.
I'm glad, because we're ecstatic, too. I think it's going to do wonderfully for our community. Anyways, the guidelines' purpose is to conform to the general plan policies. It implements General Plan Policy 19.11, which states, "Develop and apply a comprehensive set of community design standards and guidelines in conformance with goals, objectives, policies, and action programs in the community design section." It's to foster attractive, unique environment. It will provide a comprehensive treatment of the built environment and quality urban design, creating a walkable, sustainable, cohesive, and built enduring environment. And it's to create an enduring built environment. Some of the points that are important are that the design guidelines provide direction to achieve quality design, and basically, they provide a structured set of rules for design professionals to follow. The guidelines are intended for new construction, redevelopment, renovation of existing facilities, and unless they're under the control of a specific plan, which have their own design guidelines. The design guidelines do not dictate a specific style, and each development is intended to contribute to the form and quality of life and to improve Lancaster's identity. Each building and development must be inviting, sustain interest, accommodate the intended use, reflect the importance of people in a human-scale design, which means creating places amenable to human use and comfort, contribute to the form and quality of life, improve visual quality, utilize design standards for more sustainable, livable Lancaster, and use lead crit—and lead criteria has been added to ensure a more environmentally sustainable design. And with that, I'll start the presentation. The beginning is the all-development, which uses smart growth concepts, quality housing for people at different income levels, desirable places to live, work, and play, walkable communities, trails, pedestrian connections, gathering areas, appropriate alternative transportation. And here you just see different types of development. We're looking at sustainable green construction technologies using alternative energies. We include cool roofs, vertical access, photovoltaic, solar heating and energy production, building orientation, water conservation, smart landscaping using zerscape techniques, and streetscape design. In all-development, we thought screening was very important, to screen development from sensitive uses. As you can see in the photo, I mean, the drawing, you'll see commercial with a truck behind it, awalls, landscaping, and you can see adjacent to that, a residential. We want to screen parking lots from street view. We want the developers to use careful design, location, and integration of utilitarian Roof design, varied roof designs to create interest, lessen mass of buildings and add visual appeal, and reduce the scale. If you look at the top left photo, you'll see a multiple-family project. The roof, there's varied roofs. It breaks the mass into smaller sections with different roof lines and planes. An important component is 360-degree architecture, providing—and providing quality materials in appropriate colors. 360-degree architecture creates shadow lines and massing and fenestration, articulating walls, providing a change in the wall plane, breaking down mass into smaller massing, somewhat similar to what we've done at the Walmart on Valley Central, where it doesn't look like a huge building, but is broken down into a number of smaller buildings. Again, we have another multiple-family project, which is broken down into a smaller section. You can see the use of color, materials, placement of windows. Some of them are inset, and the use of awnings and facades. And then on the bottom right-hand, we have treatment on the corner, which is quite important for focal points. The next thing we're looking at is innovative subdivision design, and with that, we're looking at modified grid pattern to provide connectivity for pedestrians and vehicles, employ traffic calming measures, create walkability pathways, smaller block sizes, connectivity, and protected paths and interesting streetscapes. Vary lot width and setbacks, create attractive neighborhoods. We're looking at wider corner lots to create interest, visually interesting streets with parkways which are pedestrian-friendly and safe. And here you also notice the garage orientation varies. Again, another example of placing the house closer to the street, setting the garages back, visible entry for the front of the home, highly visible street elevations with windows, front porches, balconies facing the street to create eyes on the street, and basically a visual appeal, compatible changes in form, material, and color. Again, with the innovation—innovative subdivision design, we're looking at the porches, balconies, and windows, eyes on the street, parkway planner strips, which were really important to make a creative streetscape and to provide a feeling of safety for pedestrians. Entryways and focal points. Entryways into subdivisions are important. They're designed—they need to be designed to—we need to design the neighborhood interways to be distinct, to reflect the overall architecture of the development and design of the street. We need to create recognizable focal points to provide sense of identity, civic pride, and sense of place. Open spaces and common areas create higher quality of life through social interactions, designed to be viewed from adjacent residential. So you want to make sure that you put the—that we place the open space surrounded by residential, so you still have eyes on the park for safety reasons, and always pedestrian connections. Landscaping is important. It must be appropriate with the use of trees, bushes, and zerscape techniques, with limited amounts of turf and minimal irrigation. Commercial. Basically, commercial is about site planning, the arrangement of buildings, plazas, parking, pedestrian connections, and landscaping and their interrelationship. Commercial buildings should be placed closer to the street, at or near the street edge, with the parking behind the buildings. We need protected sidewalks, on-street parking, mature canopy trees, parkways, and awnings, providing pedestrian connections, again, separating the pedestrian and vehicle access whenever possible, and we have to make sure it fits contextually, the size, mass, and Here's an example of placing the larger building behind smaller tenants up on the top-left side. As you can see, that's probably Victoria Gardens, and the larger building is not so prominent. Looking at street-level activity, sidewalk activity, street-level shops, invisible entries. Again, emphasize building entries, orientate—orient inline shops in front of big store—big-box doors, and the diagram on the bottom-left, again, shows a big box with smaller tenants surrounding it. Common areas are very important, to create outdoor rooms, provide for well-defined courtyards, intimate settings, amenities, and pedestrian connections, and one important feature is safety. Pedestrian access, separate pedestrian and vehicles whenever possible, provide connection within and throughout the development. And this also shows them, make sure you break up the large parking areas. And parking lot planting, want to make sure we have enough shade, safety, breaking up the mass of the parking lot, and reducing the heat island effect, and providing screening, especially if the parking is adjacent to the street. Here's just an example of vehicle circulation and parking, where we break up the parking, and the top one is the way we would prefer it, with the buildings adjacent to the streets and landscaping, and not the bottom one, where you have a sea of parking. Building facades need to have insets, canopies, wing walls, trellis features, arcades, and colonnades, and an important concept of building is to—is to provide wrapping around the window glazing, so you have it along the front and 50% on both sides. Sorry, if you couldn't hear me. So you want to make sure you have windows along the front and the sides of the building, rather than just the front of the building.
Oh, I see, okay.
Entry doors and windows, make sure they're pedestrian-scaled, and you want to make sure we have rich visual detail. And now we come into mixed use. And basically, a lot of the concepts are the same. We have the prominent corners, the activity at the street, zero-front setback with parking in the rear. Some of the important aspects is to activate the pedestrian realm with attention to entries, windows, doors, provide seating areas, resting, dining, people watching, and the overall goal is to provide a cohesive urban form. Industrial. Want to make sure noise or odor issues do not create a nuisance for adjacent properties. Screening is another issue that we want to make sure that you screen all the— Screening is another issue that we want to make sure that you screen all the loading and unloading docks probably towards the end and with walls and landscaping. You want to make sure the building looks good from the street. Clearly indicate all loading areas and provide proper turning radius for trucks. Separate parking lots for employees, citizens, and larger trucks, and just making sure that it looks well from the street. And from here, I will turn it over to Jason Codel, who will talk to you about options for maintenance.
Thank you, Sylvia. One of the discussions the Architectural Design Commission had was, these are great programs, ideas, services, and even improvements. The question was, how do we continue to add value to that process and value to those systems? Is if we're building parks, we're building expanded parkways, what are the maintenance or what is the maintenance cost associated with that? And are we recommending something that can't be sustained long-term? I'd share with them the existing funding sources that we utilize, which are landscape lighting districts, lighting districts specifically, as well as drainage assessments districts. I also shared with them that there are additional opportunities with community facilities districts for maintenance, which allow for, one, it's a property owner vote to assure that the new property owner stands the assessment, but also it's just a result of the property taxes generated off of residential typically doesn't pay long-term for all these additional services and landscape improvements. CFDs provide an opportunity to expand those levels of services, not only just landscape maintenance, lighting districts, and other drainage facilities, but they also, if you go to the next slide. They also provide opportunities to fund long-term sheriff's services, long-term fire services. Ambulance services are included in those functions, recreational opportunities, recreational services, libraries, maintenance upgrades to city facilities, museums, ballfields, and a number of different park amenities, as well as streets and maintenance and maintenance of roads. So they expand your ability to fund a lot of these improvements to a great, to a great scale that assure that the Architectural Design Commission, that in their, in their recommendations, that these services, if approved in the future, have the opportunity to be maintained long-term.
Mayor Paris, members of the City Council, this concludes staff's presentation. We would ask and recommend to you that you adopt Resolution 09-119, thereby adopting the architectural and design guidelines as presented to you. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions? Any comments?
Brian, this touches on everything physical in the city, whether it be residential, commercial, parks, recreational opportunities, and what we as a city and as citizens want our city to look like. Can you talk a little bit about the process of how that gets pushed out to the, who would be designing this, the residential architects, commercial, public projects? And what's the feedback loop as they go through the process? How do we get that information to the people doing the actual design work as early as possible so they know what the expectations are and can get those projects close to what we want the first go-around?
I think that's, that's an excellent question. The city's planning department is actually right now working on revising our entire application process. A part of that is going to be, you know, looking at how we allow online submittals, but we've also looked at including another step within the process that essentially would ask that developers and people who are project proponents go through our preliminary review process first. This gives us an excellent opportunity as a staff to review what they're looking at doing early on in the process before they've invested a great deal of money and a great deal of time to allow us to say, here are things that you can correct, things that we think would make for a better project, issues that the city considers important that we would like you to, to change. We believe that if it's very clear in our design guidelines and ultimately the development codes that we're going to be preparing, that the development community, once they understand that these are what apply to everybody, more than likely will abide by those. In those rare instances where there may be a dispute, it's already established in the city's municipal code that that dispute resolution is in the hands of the Architectural and Design Planning Commission, who actually, you know, went through this effort to prepare and recommend these to you. We would expect that most, most things would be resolved through, through that process. As far as educating the development community that's out there, I guess one of the downsides right now is there's not a great development community out there right now, given the economy. However, given the, the rise in electronic submittals and the ways to disseminate information, I think that we have numerous opportunities to make sure that those people and those companies who deal with us on a regular basis are well-aware of what happens, be they architects, designers, the civil engineering community, or what have you. And as I said early in my presentation, I think one thing that this is very good at is the development community says, if you can tell us what you'd like your city to be, if you tell us what you expect, that, and we understand that, we will work towards doing that. Because, you know, they're like everybody else. They want the easiest way to get to the end of the process. And if their understanding is that the way you do that is meet the city's needs and expectations, then in most cases, they are going to do that. And I think that's why it's so important to have these adopted and, and have them adopted by the council because it stands as a statement of what our expectations are as a city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Paris, I wanted to go back at the beginning of the presentation, and I don't want to not give credit where credit's due. You know, when the council came into play two years ago under Mayor Paris, there was a lot of commissions added. And I spoke to Mark this last week and specifically said, in my long-term on the planning commission, I know of at least two attempts of trying to come up with some design guidelines. And with the addition of the commission and the great work that we see here tonight, it's with great pleasure to see the design guidelines. And you're correct, many a times as a planning commissioner, I've heard builders and developers come before the planning commission and say, if we just had a set of guidelines and there was clarity, we'll build it. And I think that this is going to set the stage for the future to come, and I think that it'll give the community another additional sense of pride. And so, great things out of the commission. So, thank you.
We have one speaker card, and then I have a couple of comments. Mr. Weisberger? You're not going to rate on her parade, are you?
Well, I guess my, my comment is, is I thought the commission did a really good job on 90% of the project. There's one part that I really have a hard time with, and then a couple of technicalities. The part that I have the biggest problem with is the parkway strips. You're talking about, and I want you to realize what you're talking about if you adopt these, putting a four-foot planter strip between the curb and the sidewalk, putting a four-foot sidewalk in, which is now a foot smaller than the normal sidewalk we have out there. And if you go through old sections of Lancaster, they're there. And most of them are grass. The pictures I showed you was grass, which isn't against the ordinance, the water-wasting, all those different things. So now you're going to put plants in there. Somebody's going to drive up with their car. Now they're going to have to park farther out in the street so they can open up their door. They're going to have to walk down the street and up the driveway to get to somebody's house. Think of a four-foot planter out here in front of City Hall. Everybody would have to walk down the street in order to get into City Hall. If it's on-street parking, I don't think parkway strips are appropriate. If it's strip malls, commercial, I think it's great. If it's main thoroughfares along roads, I think it's great. But in residential parking, the first thing of design is function. And a parkway is not a functional way in a residential area. And if you take it to the next step, and I don't want to cause too much problem, but if you then turn it into a CFD or a landscape district, that the city's now going to maintain that four-foot strip, are you putting in separate meters? Am I calling the city to come out and take care of the plants? How are you going to make, the city itself has already taken out parkways and put concrete in because it's too hard to maintain four-foot strip in the middle of a residential area. So I have a real problem with the residential with a four-foot parkway. And we can go through, it's a, it's kind of one of these great design deals that comes around every 10 years. And then after they do it, they go, oh, my God, this is a, this is a nightmare. Everybody puts brick in, puts block in, the next house looks different than the next house, which looks different than the next house, it's dirt. It actually runs into your street tree program. Four-foot walkway, four-foot sidewalk now puts your city street tree sitting right on the edge of the concrete. You can't move it farther in because you're out of the easement then. So now you're putting it in that parkway strip, which is breaking your concrete and your curb. I think it is very inappropriate for that. The other technicality, because I'm running out of time here, I have a little problem with the pictures. I hate getting design guidelines of pictures of plants that don't grow here. There's a lot of plants in there that don't grow here. There's a lot, the parkways show grass in it, which is against your water ordinance. So there's, there's pictures of things against your ordinance, there's pictures of plants that don't grow here, it doesn't meet your street tree ordinance, it's all palm trees, it doesn't have the big shade trees on 30-foot apart or 20-foot apart, they're, they're just kind of all spread. So I really think you need to think about the parkway. The rest of it, I think, is a great document, and I think it really helps the city out. But the parkways and residential or on-street parking is a real design nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
I didn't want to get into an argument with Neil, but I had a landscaped architect redesign my front yard, and it's got a four-foot parkway. And she was capable of being able to come up with a very drought-resistant plan that meets that, and I think it meets the city. So we might, obviously, pictures are not necessarily indicative of the policies, but I think that what we saw here tonight is a very workable plan, and obviously, we might have to get some new pictures. So that's easy ones to change.
That was pretty picky, Neil. I think you've done an amazing job. In regards to the parkway, yes, it is going to be more difficult to maintain, it's going to be problematic, but it also increases the walkability of neighborhoods. And what we have is we have people not liking to walk on sidewalks that abut the street, and there's substantial studies on that. If you pull it apart, pull it away from the street, you get more people walking, you get more eyes on the neighborhood, you're getting neighbors getting to know each other more. The purpose of all of this is to improve the quality of the life of the people who live here. And there, there has to be a trade-off in getting there. And I think that you've spent a year and a half on balancing those trade-offs and have done a magnificent job. Diane Cook and Randy Hall, I'd like you to close out the session if you have anything you want to add, because you've done a magnificent job on this. It also is a demonstration of what happens when citizens work with the city to increase the quality of all of our lives, instead of just expecting the city to do it for us. What you guys did is truly a remarkable accomplishment. As soon as the city attorney tells me how to do it so we don't violate the Brown Act, I want to get as many of you together as we can and figure out where we go from here. Because I am, you've exceeded all of my expectations, all of my hopes and dreams of what you would be able to accomplish, and you did it, you know, within the deadline, which rarely happens, you know? So, thank you, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. You've created something magnificent. And did you want to say anything?
I want to thank you, Mayor Paris, for forming the commission. It sure increased my sense of pride in the city. And I told Neil the first time he brought up the issue, that I was him on that. I thought parkways were an issue that shouldn't have to happen, and with the staff that helped out, and I came around, I was him on that. So I really feel like we did make an effort to try to handle that. Your, your statement that there are trade-offs and the walkability, I walk my dog on Avenue K near the college, and when the cars go by, the dog cringes and I move a little faster because I don't want those cars to hit me. So I really appreciate the opportunity that you gave us to do this, and I hope that it makes Lancaster a place that people really enjoy even more than they do now.
Thank you. Thank you so much. 10 years from now, when we cross Avenue N, you're going to know you're in a different city, and that was what the goal was, and I think you've had that. Anything else?
Mayor Paris, I just wanted to say, who wouldn't want to live in a city that looks like that? And I know that when I was running, my two main goals were to see Lancaster safe and see it attractive. And look where we are today. It's really amazing. And thank you so much, it was a great job. You know, there are going to be some things that people are going to balk at, but when there's change, and this is a good change, there's rejection, there's tolerance, and then there's acceptance. And what's going to happen with downtown Lancaster, what's going to happen in our neighborhoods and all over Lancaster, I can't wait to see it happen. Thank you so much, you did an excellent job.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Move that we adopt Resolution 09-119? And it's unanimous. Thank you so much. That's not it. Here we go. Oh, this is a good one, too. New Business, we'll hear from Vern Lawson on the Visitors Bureau of Lancaster. You know, some meetings you just take leaps, don't you? You take leaps. Instead of little baby steps, you take leaps. We're taking leaps tonight, that's wonderful.
This is a follow-up to a council action that was taken a couple of meetings ago, establishing a visitor bureau in Lancaster. And there's a requirement that we have a hospitality representative. We'd like to recommend Mr. Randy Miranda, who's here if you had any questions, who's the general manager of the Hampton Inn and Suites for the hospitality representative. And then at your pleasure, we also would like to have an appointment of one of the council members. And this will round out the commission.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody have a burning desire to be on the hospitality? Is that what we're calling it? The hospitality, or is it the visitors bureau?
Mayor Paris, I would be more than happy to lend my experience.
Anyone else? Any desire?
Whatever the desire of the council and the mayor is, fine.
Can we do this next week? Next meeting?
We can certainly do it January 12th, at your pleasure. I might suggest that you do the, yeah, I'm sorry, Randy. I forgot the name.
Is there a motion for Randy Miranda? I'll move that.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. Now we'll hear from Jason Codel on New Business Item 2.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity. You are correct, we're, we're taking a number of leaps tonight, and today, the green energy update is going to add to that list. Under your direction, we've been evaluating and looking at a number of green energy programs throughout the city to identify better ways to, one, be more efficient, utilize our capacity better. And today, we're going to give you an update on what's been happening and as, where we're going to go with the program that we've been implementing. First and foremost, we want to talk about, it's the best of times, it's the worst of times. The, I think that is appropriate today as it is, as it is many years ago, is that the economy has changed substantially. The worst of times, of course, is construction's down, GDP is down, retail sales, of course, have fallen, property values down, unemployment up, economic indicators flat, and the forecast is, you know, generally still bleak. I think people are, have concerns about the future, future possesses. What the...
Is that your uplifting message?
No, 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 no. Here we get, there are two, yeah, there are two comments to that, is one is the worst of times, one is the best of times, is the opportunity it presents. And I think we have an opportunity here in the city of Lancaster to capitalize on the solar energy, capitalize on the energy programs locally, that we can change the way we look at, look at, look at energy. As we're, as we're going to talk tonight, we're going to talk about six different programs that we've been implementing that I think capture those opportunities and maximize the, the utilization. capture those opportunities and maximize the utilization. Of course, our opportunity is sun, land, and demand. No secret, there's a lot of sun in Lancaster. And of course, by this slide, you can identify the the hotspot there is really, really close to the epicenter of what's happening with with sun and solar energy. And of course, land, as you see around, there's there's many areas of of opportunity to expand solar energy and development. And the third, of course, is demand. We are, you know, very proximate to the largest demand center in at least the United States that allows for easy distribution and transportation of that solar energy. Opportunity knocks. First and foremost, we need to look at our footprint as it relates to what energy we're using. And I think that's in in any energy program, the first thing we need to do is look at our look at our footprint. We, with the contract that you have on NB3 tonight with Johnson Controls, will be evaluating all the energy efficiencies that we use. Simple items as changing the light bulbs, looking at every light bulb that we have in City Hall, identifying different wattages, different types of light bulbs that use different electricity. The opportunities to place small wind turbines throughout our throughout our utilities or throughout our system, such as the parks and other locations. Looking at weather stations, constructing weather stations that monitor the the atmospheric temperatures, monitor the wind, monitor other weather dynamics that allow us to water efficiently. That will, of course, lessen the amount of energy used in our pumps as well as save a significant amount of resources in in water. And 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 others such as redoing the entire system of the HVAC system here at City Hall to making it much more efficient. We currently have 25-year-old HVAC systems and replacing those as an energy efficiency component. The the benefit to this program is that there are a number of different grant opportunities and loan opportunities that fund these programs. So that we hope that and with all the programs we're going to talk about, we hope that it becomes revenue neutral as well as the opportunity for it to be potentially cost-saving to us. Not only will the capital be paid for, but in return, energy savings in finances as well. This, of course, is a fluid process. We have applied for a number of different grants, HVAC grants, as well as modifying our streetlight system. So these are going to change as we proceed. But nonetheless, the intent is to improve our system with energy savings that we'll see from the the energy efficiency upgrades. The second component is an AB 2466 program, which was approved by the state legislature that allows cities, municipalities, and school districts to, on their own property, build, maintain, and operate energy generating facilities to use for their own energy production. Up to 1 megawatt, the city can build a solar plant on a property that the city owns, put that into the distribution system, and offset the costs associated with our energy purchased from Edison. We are looking at a number of different opportunities. One is the the thermal solar that that we've we've talked about and we've seen with with a number of different companies locating. Concentrated photovoltaics where we not only it's PV, but there are magnifiers that magnify and concentrate the the solar energy to the photovoltaic cells that then create the energy. Again, solar thermal as as East Solar has used, it's and, you know, wind energy, if those if those opportunities exist. But it's taking that that opportunity again, that solar, wind, and also the opportunity the state legislature gave us with maybe 2466 to maximize the usage of our energy systems. Again, the intent of this is to do this at a cost-effective, in a cost-effective manner, do it at a lesser cost to the city or at a cost-neutral position. We also look at in our program of AB 811, which is, as we do with the city and the opportunities that exist with the city, what opportunities exist for our residents to take part in this program as well, take part in the energy efficiency, take part in the sun, land, and demand that we have. AB 811 is again a legislation that was approved by the state legislature that allows housing retrofits to individual residences. The most important part of this is that it is a financing mechanism. It allows a homeowner to voluntarily assess their property for the improvements that are made. Again, as we're doing with our energy efficiency program, those savings that is received by the resident will then offset the additional assessment that they they place on their property. Couple other components to that is it benefits them in the sense that it's not a traditional type of financing that doesn't go on their personal personal finances, but necessarily it's a it's an assessment that's associated with their property. So the improvements that are attributed to their property, well, then when they sell the property, so will the tax and so will the improvement stay with the property. So it gives them a much easier opportunity to utilize revenues available that are not typically available in the financial structure the way we have today. So again, capitalizing on that opportunity. First and foremost of that is going to be the energy footprint again, is looking at that house and saying, how can it be more efficient? The second component of that is the generation component. One, households be efficient. Two, the efficiency improvements that are made, they can actually generate the electricity on their property. And then again, finance that through a special assessment. And of course, we've talked in the past about wind turbines, small wind turbines generating for residential neighborhoods or residences, residences, as well as solar panels and many other household-type improvements. Again, all financed with an assessment through their their property taxes. I will note, this is a this is in conjunction with the partnership of the county of LA or LA County. There has been complications with the financing component of this. Dave, if there's any deep more detailed questions, Dave can answer them in a much more detailed component. But the basically is it's it's secondary versus primary lien. It's a voluntary action you're placing on your property, which comes first, which comes second. The bond market has reacted differently to that. LA County has been taking the lead in saying, we will test that in the courts to make it valid and ask the cities to participate in implementing a local program associated with that AB 811. And we are prepared to implement that program. Solar development generally is is the private solar development arm, is there are a number of businesses that are coming in that are generating electricity, whether it be wind or solar, for their own personal profits, their own personal gain. Implementing a program by which the city partners with these developers either through easing the environmental processes, working on zoning, which the planning commission has on its agenda to look at the changing of zoning in rural residential to allow certain solar energy components to be done with a CUP and under under certain zoning. So it doesn't require them to do a zone change necessarily for solar plants, but allows them to do it in the rural residential zones by CUP. And again, photovoltaic solar systems are very low impact on traffic and some of the other things that are associated with neighborhoods. So it there's a very possibility of a compatible use. But it's again, using that economic development arm that talks Vern talks about, as well as partnering with the planning department and other building department to streamline that process for major solar developers. As well as into the future, what do our future buildings look like? Looking at a green building code. California has a green building code and actually looking at opportunities that extend that and go beyond that, such as white roofs, insulation, a number of different solar panel upgrades and opportunities that exist in the changing the codes and modifying those codes. Create an opportunity to not only save existing residences, but in the future, new residences and new buildings that are energy efficient. And this is where it where the rubber really meets the road in the opportunity section is that the there, I guess there is a debate of whether, you know, good luck is a result of your action or good luck is a result of fate. I think we tend to believe that good luck is a result of our action. The opportunity comes as a result of our action is through joint ventures, power purchase agreements, development, development agreements, we have the opportunity to partner with a lot of these solar companies, actually be integrally involved with the development, purchasing, operation, and transmission of a lot of these energy sources. And it's at this point, a lot of these discussions are in its infancy, but it's again, it's an opportunity that we're trying to capitalize on with major, major development of energy. Implementation of this, I think we have a couple member of the green team here with us today if they want to stand up and be recognized. The we have internally created a green team to look at, look at everything, I guess we do green. And the first and foremost, they've been working on turning our, thank you guys for coming, turning our our planning processes to a digital process. And it's those minor things from a standpoint of efficiency and energy, energy component, but also it's a customer service component. They've taken this task and said, how do we make our system more green for a planning department and how do we make it more efficient? Their their first task is going to be digitizing the planning process and and coordinating the planning and development process so that it's a fluid development, fluid and digital process and less paper, less time, et cetera. From there, they're going to be looking at these components. What is the building code's going to look like? What are the details of these plans going to look like? How are we going to implement the AB 811 program? A number of these things, this green team internally will be looking at that and identifying the best ways to do it and be very creative as it relates to the way to implement these programs. Timelines, energy efficiency, again, today you have on your agenda in NB3, the energy efficiency contract, which still has some some details to be worked out, but nonetheless is is on your for your approval tonight. AB 2466 in mid-2010, AB 811, depending on what the county's timing is, is mid-2010. And of solar and solar development, planning changes, et cetera, first quarter 2010. And of course, these development partnerships is an ongoing process that we continue to work and look forward to. I will note that this is a fluid process. There's a lot of changes that will happen in between. Legislation is changing rapidly. Grant opportunities are changing rapidly. Funding sources are also changing. So as we progress down this path and as we bring forward these opportunities to you for approval, they may look different than they do today, but nonetheless, with the intent of, and I think the goal that every electron that the city of Lancaster uses would be from a renewable source or financed through a renewable source. And with that, one last comment is it's Lancaster's way of changing the world. I think we although a small impact, I think we have a major impact globally. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Would you be amenable to Mr. Lawson teaching you how to do PowerPoint?
You know, when I when I saw when I when I saw when I saw Vern's PowerPoint, I thought, man, we the mayor needs to structure this agenda a little bit or let Vern go after everybody.
It's my fault.
The term he used was PowerPoint envy, I think.
Any questions?
I've got two questions. One related to AB 2466, said the city could do a 1-megawatt project. Is there a limitation to one project? If we find one is successful, can we put 1-megawatt projects at multiple locations?
Yeah, there are. The AB 2466 is limited to 1-megawatt. There are some other opportunities that we're looking at, which are power purchase agreements, which would entail the construction of photovoltaic, for specific, putting photovoltaic shades over the City Hall parking lot that is behind the meter. There is no limit to those agreements. The the 2466 allows the transfer of energy through a an Edison line to another meter. We are exploring opportunities as well with power purchase agreements to actually place the generating facilities on the back end of the meter, which then we can place these
As much as we want.
As much as we want, whether it's the soccer center, parking lots, or parking rides, or Jet Hawk Stadium, et cetera.
And AB 811, I think, is fascinating because the the biggest roadblock to the average homeowner for to to make these kind of improvements in their house is the upfront cost. And this looks like a mechanism to get around that. Dave, could you talk a little about kind of what the status of 811 is and where you think it's going?
The the biggest problem with 811 is that it's voluntary. And they've tried to structure a voluntary assessment into and treat it like a a non-voluntary assessment, which be like a tax. And they're treated differently in terms of the priority of the lien in the event of a foreclosure. And that's the problem that the bond markets had with AB 811. The programs that have been done, and there have been some done throughout around the state that have been done successfully, have been funded with non-bond proceeds. And so you need a source of revenue to to do that, general fund revenues or or whatever to do that. And and there have been a number of attempts at the legislative level to fix the problem. There was one that was done this year and I I think, you know, it just needs to be validated before we can move forward with some kind of a financing on it. The other attempt was to adopt a an amendment to the Melrose Act with CFDs to allow CFDs to be used for for this purpose. And that bill, which passed the legislature, has passed the legislature twice, has been vetoed twice by the governor.
Is that a code, those initials you're using?
CFD, Community Facilities District. shorthand.
But for a lot of the people watching this, they don't know what that shorthand is, including
Most of them will know what
Including the mayor.
Most of them will know what a Melrose tax is.
If you pay one, you know what it is.
And if you pay, if you've ever paid one, you know what it is. And those have typically been, CFDs have typically, Melrose taxes with Community Facilities Districts have typically been used to finance infrastructure on new developments, where you have a single property owner that can vote for the the tax. And we've done those in the past. We haven't done any since early 1990s in Lancaster. But those have been done in the past and you've adopted, or the city council, a number of years ago now, has adopted a policy for implementing those. But so far, we haven't found one that really worked according to the policy. So none have been done for quite some time. The other alternative in using a Melrose Community Facilities District is to finance ongoing maintenance costs and service costs, such as sheriffs and fire, infrastructure maintenance. You can finance those on an ongoing basis with a Community Facilities District. It would not necessitate the issuance of bonds in that case, but merely an annual tax approved by the voters that are subject to the tax to pay for ongoing maintenance costs.
Thank you. I I had a meeting with some with a representative from Phillips who tell me that they now have streetlights that are operated by motion sensors and that they can dim. And we can save a huge amount of electricity that way. But Edison doesn't let us do that. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's an accurate statement. There is technology available that allows for the dimming of lights at certain times of the night, dimming is less likely. And those technologies exist. We haven't been able to come to an agreement with Edison on the ability to do that. Phillips, we do have with the lights that we own and operate, we do have a relationship with Phillips through Johnson Controls to actually apply for grants and opportunities to retrofit all these lights that we own with more energy-efficient bulbs, as well as looking at the opportunity of dimming and saving electricity through that mechanism as well.
So why couldn't we just do an ordinance requiring it?
I defer to the city attorney on that. I think that it's certainly something we ought to pursue.
I mean, I certainly see why Edison doesn't want us to save electricity. I mean,
The savings is just
You don't have to be a genius to get that one.
To put it in context, what Jason's talking about, we own, I think, less than 10% if it's correct, of the lights. So we're making the efficiencies on the less than 10% that we own. But I'd ask Dave about the ordinance.
Well, I think it's something that we ought to look at to see. There are a lot of legislative restrictions on what we can do to dictate to Edison and and other utilities. So I but I do think it's something to explore.
Can you, let's put that on the calendar.
Sure.
We don't have to do it now, but let's make sure we we follow up on it. Okay?
Actually, yeah, we we have and and we put some urgency on it because the savings and in our next budget year, a significant part of what you're going to use general fund for is to subsidize lighting because of the energy costs. So it's something that we put some priority on.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we take a break? Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Ken Collins, did you want to speak on this issue?
Yes, I did.
Okay. You're not from Edison, are you?
No, no, no. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you, Jason. My name is Kenneth Collins from the High Desert Region Green Jobs Initiative. And I had a PowerPoint, but I was a little late coming in. What we have successfully done is many of the things that Jason just expounded on entails a highly trained and skilled staff. Many of the existing general contractors that the cities have in their list need to be certified with green retrofit training. Also, many of the solar contractors, Title 24 on the Energy Efficiency retrofit on buildings and commercial municipal buildings require a slightly different code. And that code is coming into effect January 2010. We have successfully gotten the ability to do the training through the California Building Performance Contractors Association, the premier CEC certified, CEC, by the way, CEC, by the way, is the California Energy Commission Certified Trainer on Energy Efficiency Retrofit with Energy Star and also HERS Raiders Training. There are only three trainers existing in California certified, Calcerts, California Building Contractors, ResNet, and Cheers, four. And by that certification, that means all the HERS raters that are certified, certifying municipal and commercial buildings as well as residential, are the first line that goes in and gives the individual owner and or city representative the rating of the energy loss of the building. The second stage is when the contractors are certified to do the energy efficiency with Energy Star, and many people know about Energy Star appliances, et cetera. Well, the state is moving toward, and the nation is really moving toward, Energy Star ratings on new buildings, homes, and also Energy Star on their retrofits. The rater now, after the energy efficiency methods have been included, comes in and rates that building for the savings, percentage of savings, that will bring it up to the whole house retrofit. The second trainer that we have is Boots on the Roof. It's a fancy name they came up with, but it's through a IT firm called Unitech. Unitech, they have, they have a contract with Edwards now. They work with the FBI and several other federal agencies, highly trained, highly skilled firm.
Jerry, you can...
And that, that, that group is now, we have an MOU with them for training. They have a portable unit that they bring down, and will do five day and six day trainings at locations within Palmdale and Lancaster. And our first demonstration, by the way, for both contractors will be at the AV Youth Bill Charter School on the 15th, 4:30 to 6:30. And we have a special presentation for our faith-based community because in ARRA funding, there's a faith-based component of which the faith-based community has not been given the appropriate light, so to speak. So I thank you for this time, Jason. I thank you for inviting us. And I look forward to seeing many of you out there on the 15th for the presentation by both of the contractors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's take Ted.
Paris and members of the City Council, my name is Brian Whalen. I work in the Parks Maintenance Division of the Parks Recreation and Arts Department.
I was going to say, you didn't look like Robert Greene. Who's listed?
A younger version.
Which department is he in now?
The right one. And I'm here to talk about the specifics of our proposed relationship with Johnson Control Incorporated. In May of 2009, the city went into a request for qualification process to determine potential energy-saving opportunities through various, throughout various city facilities. Under RFQ 533-09 Energy Services Company, eight companies submitted portfolios to the City of Lancaster for consideration. Five companies were invited to give us presentations detailing their energy-saving concepts and capabilities. JCI was ultimately chosen as the vendor for this project. The projects that we have selected in a process with Johnson to select things that would be energy, both energy-saving and befitting of where we need to go as a city. First and foremost is lighting upgrades. And what that is, is like the deputy city manager spoke of earlier, changing out lamps, putting in new ballasts and so forth that are more energy efficient. A lot of our facilities are quite old, over 20, 20 years old, and we still have the same technology that was installed at that time. There's been quite a considerable, considerable upgrades over that time. But there'll be lighting upgrades on interior lighting, walkway lighting, building security lighting, and parking lot lighting throughout all of our facilities. And that would include all of our parks, Lancaster City Hall, the Performing Arts Center, the Western Hotel, and Clear Channel Stadium. One of the components of the lighting upgrade will be Clear Channel Stadium itself. The sports lighting, the field lighting will be replaced. At one time, one felled swoop, lock, stock, and barrel. Instead of how we do it now, we do it pole by pole. We have A, B, and C poles, so we'll do two A poles one year. Two years later, we'll do the B poles and so forth. But to keep current with Major League levels, that's, that's how we keep up with that. We'll do that in one felled swoop to the tune of about $440,000. There has been considerable change in technology and the refraction of the lighting, and certainly in how the light operates and its efficiency. And so we'll be changing that out. There's a little over 190 fixtures for lighting of the sports facility. We'll be dropping that down to 160 and still using less energy to light that field and getting the same result. Another area we'll be approaching is water conservation measures. We'll be putting in low-flow plumbing devices throughout the majority of our facilities, places that use high volume, Lancaster City Hall, the Performing Arts Center, certainly, the Soccer Center, Clear Channel Stadium, and Lancaster City Park. So we'll be reducing our use of water in those facilities. We'll be installing three weather stations in our parks, one at Pierre Bane, one at the Lancaster National Soccer Center, and one at Lancaster City Park. What that will allow us to do is to measure heat, humidity, wind, and so forth. All those components and a few others add up to evapotranspiration, or ET. That will allow us to more efficiently irrigate our facilities. We've done a wonderful job irrigating our facilities and reducing the amount of water we use currently. This will allow us to take us a step further. And why three? Three, because it will give us a more well-rounded tally of measurements. We currently use one locally in the valley that is not in Lancaster. We currently use one locally in the valley that is not in Lancaster, and it's, it's done a wonderful job for us, but this will take us to the next level. The last component, and one that is really kind of attractive to me being in charge of the maintenance of this building, we'll be replacing the air conditioning units on this building. There's 20 units, 20-plus units on this building, 16 of which were installed in 1988 when we expanded to the northern half of City Hall. The original four were put in in 1984, and if, for those of you that have been around a little bit, that was the old SCE building back in the day. Two of those units existed from the mid-'60s, and we've been nursing those things along for a long time. That technology has long since moved and gone. So we'll be replacing those units on this building.
Why would we do that?
Why would we do what, sir?
Nurse those along if the, the energy consumption is, that we could save would offset the cost of new ones. I mean, why do we do that?
Honestly, sir, I can't answer that. I would like to have replaced those some time back, but then again, I, I've not, I've not been the division head until recently, so it wasn't in my spirit.
This is not your father's Lancaster.
But it will allow us to lock, stock and barrel, again, replace everything in one felled swoop on this building. And we'll be going to a chiller power unit, which will be one unit that will more equally distribute the heating and the cooling of this building and reduce our energy consumption at the same time. Excuse me. Therefore, what we are asking is that the City Council authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute all necessary documents to enter into a contract with Johnson Control to perform these energy upgrades. Further, this will allow the city to enter, enter into that contract, and if the council approves resolutions to apply for low-interest loans through the California Energy Commission, we will, that's where the bulk of the funding will come from. The fiscal impact is, it is, it's, the estimate is over 15 years of determining the contract, the city will save $1.2 million in energy costs. In addition, the city will receive through loans and rebates and other incentives $4.6 million to fund these, these projects. Johnson Controls will facilitate and implement all these, all these projects, and notably, the city will not expend $1 of capital funds to complete the project as outlined. The city will then compensate Johnson Controls and repay the California Energy Commission loans through energy savings. The 1.2 is what we will actually realize, there'll be greater savings which will, which will make payments for that loan. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
What's there to say after, we're going to save about $85,000 a year on top of everything you just said?
Over 15 years, yes.
So when does it zero out? I mean, how long do we?
Zero out, sir.
But we're making, we're saving money from the energy we're not using.
Right.
That will offset the cost of whatever you're spending. When does it zero out?
Doesn't zero out, the contract just ends. Then, then at that time, we're going to be back in a similar ballgame in 15 years. The life of your air conditioning units typically, that's your, that's your peak efficiencies, 10 to 12 years?
But does the energy savings pay for the, the cost of the replacement that we're now entering into?
Yes.
Okay. And what I'm asking is, if you were to amortize the cost of that out, when would we reach a zero break-even point?
Actually, I'm, I'm not real sure on that, sir. I can, we do have a representative from Johnson Control here that might be able to answer that question.
And the, and the reason I'm asking is, is I think that the more people are aware that you, you know, that it is a zero-sum game, that, you know, it zeros out in a certain number of years, the more likely we are to get people to do this.
Mayor, if I can answer that question. Each, each program has a different return on investment based on the energy savings as well as the cost associated with the improvement. So the aggregate is about, all of them combined is about 12 years, based on the numbers, and 15 years for total payout, that would include interest and payments on the loan. So it's a 15-year program of which all of it will be paid out. Some pay off in six years, some pay off in 30 years, depending on the cost of the, the cost of the program as well as the, the savings. The one key component is, you know, the, as we, as we negotiate this contract, is that the goal is to be completely revenue-neutral at the end of the day. There may be some, some projects, as we go down this process, it may change, funding sources, it may change. So, you know, we're, we're still working out the details, but nonetheless, at the end of the day, we will be saving money, and that's the goal of the program. If we're not saving money, we won't be doing it.
Thank you.
And we've gotten rid of 1960's equipment to upgrade to current technology.
Okay. Good.
You can motion?
Okay, I'll move that we, we authorize the city manager as designee, or his designee.
That's good.
Good presentation, thank you. I'll move that we authorize the city manager or his designee to negotiate and execute all necessary documents for the completion of the energy service upgrades project.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
Okay. We're going to the council agenda.
You haven't shown that yet.
And the presenter for this is Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor. We still have two resolutions also on that.
They weren't, they weren't listed, so that's why. Let's see here.
Wait a minute, if they're not listed, can we do them?
Actually, they are referred to in there as approved to resolutions.
Right. They weren't listed, listed on here, so let me see. You have to give me the numbers then.
Okay. They are resolution-
I could look them up on the, but it'd be faster for you to-
09-120 and 09-121.
20 and 09-121. I'll move that we adopt Resolution 09-120 and 09-121.
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
Thought by the way you wrote it that we were authorizing Mark to sign the resolution, so that's what it looked like instead of-
This was going on till the very last minute, so I apologize that we didn't-
That's okay.
-coordinate the language, but we've been working on this pretty hard to get it on this agenda as opposed to January.
That's good. We got it. Okay.
Some concern about the PowerPoint.
Send Jason a PowerPoint school. Okay. Yes. A number of, a number of months ago, we were, we formed, the mayor formed a committee to look at an ordinance on maintaining, controlling, regulating, collectives, dispensaries, you know, they go by two different names, either under the AG's description or some of the propositions in the, in the Senate bills. Couple of things have come up since then, and we've been looking at, or I've been looking at personally, and I, I think I made my statement, but I'll make my statement here also, is that we need to protect ourselves right now, no matter what happens in the future, because we can't just go on and look at any, any types of ordinances in the future. We don't want to get stuck to where LA is now, and they're trying to backpedal and try to fix things. There was a case in Clermont where they actually outlawed the collectives and the dispensaries, and that came, the decision on the appellate decision came out right towards the end of August, and so we've got the case like around in September, and so we've been looking at that. There's a case in Anaheim that, from my understanding, is the same type of case and is going to be coming out any day now. It's a possibility there could be a proposition to make marijuana completely legal on the ballot. Of course, I haven't seen, I think through our lobbyists, we haven't seen anything turned in or language from the AG's office in that way. My statement the last time when we had brought this forward was that I wanted the same thing that we did with, you know, that we do with the massage parlors, that we did with the strip joints, and we did with other things, is to make it so strict that it, you know, virtually puts them out of business, because there is a lot of illegal activity that goes on in different types of businesses like this. And the city, and with the Prop 215 and with the Senate bill, it does not take away the city's ability to regulate its business license and its land use. So we have the emergency ordinance on tonight, but my, my position would be is that I would ask the city attorney also to, and I've talked with them, to bring back the additional ordinance that we would need to set it for one year and continue it until we find out what the state of California is going to do. My position, as I'm now changing slightly, is that I don't, I don't think that we should strictly regulate it if we can outlaw it completely. And it's nothing against the people who have been shown that they need medical marijuana for their medical purposes. What I am against is the way California has set up the delivery system. The delivery system that's been set up allows for the criminal element to come into our community and set up collectives and dispensaries, and it takes a lot more effort for our law enforcement to root out that problem, sort of like the mafia opening up a restaurant to launder money through. It's a lot harder to find that laundered money when it's going through a legitimate business. That doesn't mean that the collectives are necessarily criminal, but there's a lot of criminal element that are opening up collectives and using it for profit and using it for criminal activity. And I think if public safety is our number-one issue until California takes care of the, the delivery system problems that they have, I think that we should, we should protect ourselves. And so at this time, I want an emergency ordinance at least to protect us. If they make it legal, then we're going to have to look at a different type of ordinance that we regulate it as a business, like alcohol and tobacco, which is mostly done through the state anyway also, but we have our own alcohol ordinances, we have our own tobacco ordinances that strictly regulate it. But I think until, until that time, that gives us time to not only look at it, but protect ourselves until we find out what happens in November and find out what happened with the Anaheim case, and I think it's due out any day. So that's what I put forward.
You have speaker's cards. You have five.
Mr. Paul.
Or is that Rex Paris? He can't part his hair, that's the problem.
I think we need an ordinance about impersonating the mayor. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, good evening, Merry Christmas to everybody. I'm going to talk a little later about mood-altering, but I come here to alter my mood, to be part of something greater and bigger, and I like what I see. Vice Mayor Smith, thank you for wanting to protect our city, and I agree with you, there is a lot of criminal element that's involved in these endeavors, but I, I think we're missing an opportunity to do something spectacular and something innovative, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. I've told you before that I have over 21 years of sobriety, I have not touched a drop of alcohol in that time.
He is impersonating the mayor.
Not, not because I was an alcoholic, but I just saw the destructive power of the drug. And so, setting that up, I'll just tell you, it's too long to explain. I found myself the other night at the door of a bar, a local bar, on hottie naughty body night, just as they were commencing the contest. And I walk in the door, and I see all the drunkenness and the despair and the debauchery, and I say to myself first, these are my people. Because these are the people that are looking for the truth for something better, but they find it in the wrong place, and that's, my heart went out to these young ladies that are up on stage doing these things, exposing themselves, dancing, and I thought to myself, you know, people that smoke marijuana don't do that. They drive real slow and stay home and watch movies. And, and that's the danger. And so really, if, if someone is condemning pot, but will go home and have a drink, you're looking at this the wrong way, you really, really are. I've talked before about addiction. Addiction is a pathological relationship to a mood-altering event or substance that has life-threatening consequences. On the other hand, human beings have an innate need to mood alter. We need to feel better, hence why I come, why we try and make the world a better place. That is a mood-alterer like any other. So, you know, I was glad that you talked before about diversity, and not everybody has the same life path. And I wanted to talk a little bit about my youth, you know, I had a hard time with drugs that doctors tried to give me when I was a teenager, and as a consequence, I wound up suicidal and just without hope. And there were three things in my life at that time that changed my life and allowed me to stand here alive tonight and talk to you. They were meditation, martial arts and marijuana. And if I had not had that, I might not be here. I am absolutely sure I would have committed suicide. So you can get to this from there. You can become the President of the United States, as Barack Obama has demonstrated, and have these problems and go through these ways. It is not the worst thing. I get another bite at this in closing comments, but I am just trying to tell you, the people that are here have genuine therapeutic needs, and it is much better than many of the alternatives. Please have compassion. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Hummel?
I'm Stacy Hummel with Newly Family Inc., a nonprofit mutual benefit statutory cooperative as outlined by Proposition 215 and the laws of the state of California. Just to be clear, I have one quick question for everybody, I don't want to waste anybody's time. I just want to be clear, the reason for this moratorium is that without it, and up until its enactment, which would be today, December 8th of '09, there is nothing in Lancaster's current municipal code that can legally restrict real property from being used as a storefront cooperative. All I want to know is if that is correct.
I think the, I would defer to the city attorney.
That is, that is not correct.
So what is it that is, that is keeping somebody legally from opening in the city of Lancaster? It's not in the municipal code, so.
That's precisely what keeps them from opening in Lancaster, is that there is no authorized use of property listed under our zoning ordinance that would allow the establishment of this type of a facility.
Nor would it disallow.
The way the codes work in Lancaster is that a permitted use is one that is specifically listed under the particular zone, and without it being specifically listed, then it would not be included as a permissible use.
And that was part of the Clermont case too, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, then one other question, just so we're clear and it's on record, moratoriums, if enacted today, do not act retroactively, is that correct?
That is also-
That is pretty slick.
That's, that's correct.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Let me-
Mr. McKeer, could you elaborate on the, on the, on the land use and what the Clermont case came up?
The, the concern I have here is, is obviously, I mean, I think that's a pretty trenchant analysis of what, of what could take place, and I do not want to commit the city to a course with you, with us just pulling it off the top of our head. I think it requires some research, but it's up to you. I mean, I defer to you.
No, I understand exactly what, what she was suggesting, and I just want to clarify that even though this particular ordinance would be adopted tonight and become effective, there was nothing under the existing law that would allow that, the establishment of that use. The purpose of this moratorium is to make it very clear that that is not an allowed use, but in, in my opinion, the existing statutes and, or the existing ordinances in Lancaster would not have allowed that kind of a use.
Thank you.
Do I still have time? I'm sorry, I just have one.
All right, come on. Now, they're going to, you know, give me early looks for this.
So, thank you. Well, I would have had time, I'm sorry. Then, if there's a necessity to actually make it very, very clear to everybody in the city of Lancaster that this is not an okay use, why would we need to do that if by not specifically stating it in the zoning ordinance, why would we need to make it that much more clear if it already says it by not saying it? That's my question. Thank you.
She is really smart. Melinda Bonham?
They're harmless, they just look mean.
Well, I've done this before, but it's still kind of intimidating. My name is Melinda Bonham, and I'm a resident of Lancaster, California, and very proud to be so. Fortunately, this country, or this state has recognized the need for marijuana and its medical benefits. The unfortunate part is that this moratorium that you are about to- The unfortunate part is that this moratorium that you are about to propose and approve, which I hope I can dissuade you from, would deny me the access to that, the legal, safe access to that. Because of my disabilities, I am unable to make a trip all the way down to LA. I am also, because of my disabilities, on a limited income, which makes it not economically feasible for me to go all the way down to LA. I don't have a driver's license, I can't drive. I am not the only person in this circumstance. By approving this moratorium and eliminating any other access that there has been, you would be denying me the safe and legal access to the only medication that has worked for me in 37 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Coker?
I wish I never came out of the closet. At this point, I don't understand this to you, Vice Mayor. I don't understand this part. This prohibition is not intended to interfere with the individual rights of persons to participate in collectives in order to possess or use marijuana for medical purposes as provided for by the voters of the state of California under Prop 215 and the Senate Bill 420. So, I don't get it. I mean, it's not intended to interfere with this, but you are. So, then you say in the paragraph above that that collectives cannot have use of any real property. So, can you clarify that for me?
Get this thing to work. The prohibition is for the sale and distribution of medical marijuana. And individuals can certainly possess it, they can grow it, they just can't sell it or distribute it. Anybody else?
That's not true, because as per the Attorney General guidelines, we are to provide safe and affordable access. Affordable is affordable.
Well, I'm not going to get into a long discussion about what SB 215, or the Proposition 215 says and doesn't say, and what the Attorney General can and can't do. The bottom line here is that what we're suggesting is that because Proposition 215 does in fact exist, and it gives qualified patients in their primary care givers an exemption from existing criminal statutes, that you can still possess it, you can grow it in your own homes, or wherever you choose to grow it, and you might be exempt from criminal prosecution. That's not our intent here. Our intent here is to stop the sale and distribution. Sale is not authorized by any of the statutes. So, you know, we can get into a real argument about what 215 says or doesn't say, what the Attorney General's guidelines say or don't say. Those are not mandatory, you know, they're not part of the law, they're just guidelines. And so this prohibition is on the sale and distribution, and nothing else.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Zavala?
Can you do me a favor, Mr. McKeon, and pass that?
You really want us to have this?
Yes, if you could just pass that around, please. Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Zavala. Once again, Victoria, let me try this one more time. You expect me to explain in three minutes and a whole year, I think I've gotten 30 minutes. I had one person once, this whole year, throughout the whole city of Lancaster officials, she text me, she emailed me, what does MJ stand for? You guys are dragging your feet here. For the last two years, I came up before you, Mr. Paris, and I said, you're right, we're not ready, but we're ready for education, advocacy, and awareness and wellness. You see this? This is what I used to represent before. I wasn't just about marijuana. Do you know what it's like to sit till 11:30 at night to get your point across at the city of Palmdale? You know, I've sat at both councils, I've been around the whole Antelope Valley, I challenge each and every one of you, especially you, Mr. Silio, calling this medicine dope. Dope is the person who doesn't educate themselves. That's what a dope means, okay? You have to understand what it is to live each and every day with lupus, degenerative dysdisease, and to sacrifice and give up everything. You tell me this, what does this mean? My address, I'm at Jeopardy, come, raid me, arrest me right now, because I'm not going to stop. I've done the right thing. I had a Poppy Festival nonprofit badge. You accepted the application and my money to educate as my nonprofit organization. You also state right here in your moratorium that there's no proper guidance, that there's nothing here, no state or government has implemented a specific plan. I'm sorry, but when I went to an attorney and they helped me implement all this properly in my city of Lancaster, they didn't deny me, they told me exactly what to do. In fact, this letter right here is from the Attorney General Ogden. So, you know, you could have District Attorney Steve Cooley come and take down Ms. Kimmel, Ms. Himmle, I apologize, and Ms. Croker. Poor thing, three years. I used to make fun of her and tell you, come on, three years, and this is all the work you've done? You challenged me, you said leadership, I sat here. Do you know what it's like to go to Republican tea parties, go away, oh bummer, get rid of the immigrants, no Section 8? When was the last time each and every one of you city officials stood before the MetroLink line and gave a 60-year-old an 80-year-old ride, okay? We're more than just marijuana. When was the last time you were at the senior center and you actually helped people from the heart of you, your kindness? Park Rangers have seen us, they've seen us, the law enforcement. You know, we're not here to run. I never said what we were going to do was wrong and bad. I educated, I advocated. You told me in a room, stop, stop, the campaign is over. You know what campaign is going to start? December 23rd, at 10:00 AM, when I get sworn in to take one of your seats or one of your seats, because it's wrong, it's unconstitutional what you're doing to us here. I served my community. I'm not just Victoria Zavala, the weed girl. I'm Victoria Zavala, nonprofit organizer, director of Alternative Healing, who has a sales permit, who has all the documentation saying. So you better reiterate everything that you have going on here, because you've served restraining orders. I would hate to have to serve each and every one of you to protect my collective. Thank you very much, and happy holidays to all of you. Again, I never came here for the wrong reasons, never.
Can we get those at the end, when it gets to the last person? Okay, does that conclude the speaker cards?
No more speaker's cards on that?
Through the public hearings, closed. Any discussion?
Yes, and to reiterate this again, and Ms. Zavala, it's nothing against individuals. I have educated myself, I think you've given us a number of packets before, I've read numerous case laws, all the Attorney General's literature, I've read stuff online, I've researched a whole bunch of stuff. And it's not, once again, the people who need it, it's not you as an individual, it's not saying that you're a bunch of dopers coming in here. What it is, is the delivery system and the way the state has set it up now allows the criminal element to come in and set up shop. And it takes a lot more resources and a lot more time for our deputies and for our district attorneys to root out the problems. And I don't want that coming into the city. I don't want to be a city where it rings a bell for the people who do illegal activity. Now, there's an argument that some people have said, once it's made legal, it puts, you know, the criminal element out of business because now it's there. But we're not there, okay? And until we get there, we still have to look at what is really happening. Down there, I saw all the stuff going on in LA, seen every special on it, every newscast on it. Councilwoman Marcus had another one too that I had seen, and it shows that, I mean, there's abuse. And you talk to LAPD, you talk to the deputies on the street, and there's a lot of abuse with it. And so until the legislature gets their act together and actually puts something together that's going to actually work and protect us, we have to protect ourselves. And so it's not the individual, it's not that I haven't educated myself and seen that there is some need for it, but, you know, that's where we're at right now, so...
I just wanted to say one thing. Mr. Paul, you said that these people, and you were talking about medical marijuana or marijuana users, are the ones that drive slow, stay home, and watch movies. I wanted to unfortunately remind you that there was a mom in New York that killed herself and seven others. And it came out later that she is a marijuana user, and she smoked marijuana at night after her children were in bed, and I wanted to remind you about that case.
I'm going to concur with our Vice Mayor over his concerns about the delivery system that could potentially occur, and I applaud his efforts to regulate those as tightly as possible, whatever the decision of the council is in terms of whether we allow it at all or under what circumstances. I think it does need to be tightly regulated. And the analogy I would use is, oh, let's look at a Las Vegas casino. The casino is perfectly legal, but there are very tight controls over who can have the gaming license, who can work there, the background checks they undergo, because they recognize the criminal element that could be involved with it. And that's our intent, is to keep the criminal element. Whether we allow it or not, if we do allow it, it's certainly going to be without criminal involvement.
I know I'm supposed to be quiet and not say anything, and it's a much safer way to do this. It just, I struggle with the idea that, you know, we listen to the oncologist testify that, or, I'm sorry, it's my lawyer coming out. The oncologists come in here and tell us that they have patients that could absolutely benefit from this, absolutely. I mean, there wasn't any question in any of our minds that were here that day that there are very sick people who benefit from this substance. And so what we find ourselves in is a position of a lot of people using that for recreational purposes. I mean, isn't that really what we're talking about? And so instead of recognizing, okay, it's a really difficult problem that might require some innovative ways of dealing with it, like maybe turn it over to AV Hospital and say, we will license AV Hospital to distribute this to really sick people who need it. Instead of getting creative and finding a way to fill a real medical need, we're instead just denying them any chance of getting this legally in the city, because that's the essence of what we're doing. We're telling cancer patients whose doctors say they need this that they have to go get it illegally. And I just am uncomfortable with that. But I'm uncomfortable with a lot of things we do. I mean, there's a lot of things going on in this city that we know don't work. You know, we have these halfway houses and halfway homes that allegedly are treating drug addiction, and we know they're not working. We know that they're just taking the taxpayers' money and recycling people. But because it's an uncomfortable issue, it's a difficult issue, we just ignore it. And I would hope that when we go into 2010, we start taking on these difficult issues and try to find a different way of doing things that has a positive result, instead of just business as usual, because, I mean, this is an incredibly serious overall problem that we've allowed certain businesses to seize it and not treat people, but make money for it. I mean, right on our own boulevard, we have that, we know that, that, you know, they come in for two weeks, they release them onto the street, it's a major problem with law enforcement. But instead of doing something different, we just continue to do business as usual. The other concern I have, though, is for you folks, is I talked to Steve Cooley, I spent about an hour on the phone with him yesterday, and I believe him. They are going to come, crack down on this with all of the forces they could muster, and what I would hate to see is you people get stuck in the crossfire. I have no reason to doubt your sincerity and the reasons that you're here, but I've never seen anybody benefit from throwing themselves onto the barricades, and that's what I'm getting a feeling that some of you may be tempted to do. The district attorney of this county has made it absolutely clear to me that every one of these facilities is going to be raided, and people are going to be arrested, and people are going to go to jail. So to that extent, I think a moratorium is appropriate, just for no other reason than let's see how this sorts out. But I don't want to do it for a year, I want to revisit it, I want to find a solution. And maybe that solution was with AV Hospital. I mean, why not let AV Hospital have some type of distribution center or cooperative where truly sick people are able to get this in an affordable fashion? That's just an idea that popped into my head yesterday, but there has to be a solution to this, so that people dying of cancer and people who could actually benefit from this medically aren't being denied this because it's easy for us to do it, and it's hard to find a solution.
Well, in one way, you basically affirmed exactly what I said, is that it's not the people who need it, it's the delivery system that the legislature has saddled us with, and, you know, and which is true. I mean, hey, if AV Hospital wants to set up a clinic through AV Hospital, and that's a creative way of doing it, you know, I don't think any gang is going to take over AV Hospital real soon, and they're going to be able to have a good delivery system. They could put Ed in charge of it. But...
Can you volunteer for that one? Well, what I'm saying is, I don't want to close the door to finding a creative solution to what... Does anybody here disagree that there are some people that will benefit from this?
No.
I'll agree with that. So all of us agree that there are sick people who could benefit from having access to this. I would suggest we keep working on it. Let's find a way that those people are afforded an opportunity, and it's kept out of the hands of people who want it for recreational use. Isn't that the goal we want? I mean, I'm asking you folks, is that the goal this council wants?
The goal that I want is to not be able to give a vehicle for the gangs to come in and set up a facade so that they can sell the drugs.
Isn't that what I just said?
Well, you're asking if I agree with it, maybe I'm just rewording it then, to just sort of reiterate it. But having a creative way through Prop 215, or the way the legislature has set it up, and let anybody get a business license and anybody set up that way, I don't think there's going to be any creative way that way. And there's some other creative way that comes up, that's, I'm fine with that, if the legislature can come up with a better creative way to get it.
No, that's not what I'm saying, Ron. I'm not saying, let's blow this off to the legislature, knowing that they are absolutely inefficient, ineffective, and will never resolve anything that, anything that we need them to resolve. I mean, we all know that they're inefficient. What I'm asking you is, as a council, shouldn't we continue to work on finding a way that the people in our community that are critically ill and have a real medical need for this, that we acknowledge exists in our own community, that we find a way? And it just, we shouldn't be running from the hard problems. And I agree, this is incredibly hard, but certainly not as hard it is for the person dying of cancer. I mean, I just...
When you frame it, and you always, you know, when you want to frame it with the person who's dying of cancer, and should we help them, you know, of course, what is anybody going to say? No, we don't want to help the person dying and suffering, but...
Then let's find a way.
Well, here's the problem, here's the one caveat. A lot of times, there's a lot of things that we might like to do and we might want to do, but we're a municipal city. We're not the state, we're not the feds, and so, and we're not the DA's office. So if there's a creative way above and beyond within that law, then that's fine. As I see it right now, there's a lot of things we'd like to do, but our hands get tied. Right now with Prop 215 and the way everything is set up, our hands are tied to quite an extent. If somebody can come up with a creative way to help the people that really need it and stop any ability for the gangs to be in that, I'd be all for that. But let me see it on paper.
Okay. So then, why do we need the moratorium? Or if we have the moratorium, I would like it a moratorium with the provision that this is something we still will work on.
My understanding... Could people in the audience, please be quiet, okay, so we can talk up here? Thank you.
Can I get clarification of where we're at, even before we came and sat down tonight? Do we not have a committee and day working on an ordinance to regulate this?
It kind of got shut down. Ron's on the committee, he can tell us.
Well, I'm, what I want... Well, I'm, what I want to see is that we had a possibility of Anaheim coming back with the case, where there, I think there's a couple other cases out there. We're also looking at, there was a possibility that there was going to be a referendum on the November ballot. I thought that it would be somewhat of a waste of time to work on one ordinance, when also we'd have to change 180-degree direction and do a completely other, different ordinance. But as I said, I've changed my position a little bit of, you know, that if we can, under the circumstances that Prop 215 puts it out now, I don't want any of those here. If we can do it, if we can make it illegal per land use and per, you know, what the other cities are doing, under what is being done with collectives and dispensers now, not the creative way that the mayor's talking about, I don't want any of them, period. Okay? So if the committee can continue to look at creative ways, that's fine. But going forward on an ordinance under 215 of how we're going to do it as a land use issue, of issuing business license and how we're going to strictly regulate it, no. I don't think that we should go forward with that, because I think it still gives the ability for the criminal element to come in. A creative way, if the committee wants to look at creative ways, that's perfectly legit. I think that's fine. And we do need the moratorium, because we want to have even as much tooth as we can to protect ourselves, so we don't get into any situations.
My position, I'm in total favor of the moratorium. The real question, and the hard part for the council is, what does the committee do? What direction do we want to go in addition to the moratorium? Because the moratorium by its nature is temporary, whether it be 45 days or if we continue to pass that.
Right. My contention would be, and I'll make the motion now, and then we can go forward with it, is that I would like to pass the 45-day moratorium that Mr. McEwen's put together now. I would request that we give him direction to come back to, there's a bit of the law that it actually gives you 10 and a half more months, and that puts us into December of next year. That gives us, we can always, if some creative thing comes up between then and December, if there's a legalization of marijuana completely, then we come up with another ordinance. If between now and then, we come up with something where the hospital's helping out or some other, you know, creative idea, then that's perfectly fine. But my motion would be is that we do, we pass the 45-day moratorium, and we give Mr. McEwen direction to come back with the second half of that to make it a moratorium for one year.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait a minute. What's going to happen is pretty soon, the deputy's going to come over there, and then this thing just blows up. I need you to be quiet. I just need you to be quiet. I think that your motion should include that this is something we will continue to work on, and that as soon as we come up with some way of making it within the current law, that seriously ill people are not being denied this, then I'm okay with it. But if we just make it a moratorium, I think then we can't change it. Aren't we going to need a four-one, I mean, what's the vote situation then?
You need a four-to-one vote to pass the moratorium.
Because it's emergency.
Oh, I see. So what if we pass the moratorium, and then next week, AV Hospital says we have a plan?
Can't you, you can, can't you modify it?
Oh, sure. You can anytime.
Yeah.
At our next meeting, which is not until January.
Come right back.
We could come back with appropriate ordinance to change the...
More time.
We need to go through the zoning changes to make sure that it's a permitted land We could bring something back then.
Okay. You know, I would just point out to you that this city is in the process of accomplishing the impossible in a lot of ways. You know, a year and a half ago, our crime rate was so high, we were called Compton North by the deputies that protected us. I haven't heard that term in a year.
Absolutely.
We are accomplishing the impossible. This seems to me something that we can accomplish. And I would just say, let's figure out a way to do it. And yeah, it's going to be hard, and it's going to make a few people mad, but if it means that seriously ill people are being helped, we should help them. Shouldn't we?
I think that, that you can always frame it in that way, once again, that we're trying to help the seriously ill people, but the question is, is that under the law that we have now, and under the framework that we have now, it's not a matter of serious ill people, it's a matter of keeping our citizens safe. And those cities that have gone forward with the way that it is now, have brought in the gang element into their cities. And with all the hard work that we've done...
That's not true with all the cities. Would you really want to have this fight?
Well, you have, okay, you have one argument from North Hollywood, or shows it, one article from there. What I'm saying is that the gang element does come in. It does allow the gang element to come in. It's not about seriously ill people, it's the delivery system that we have now. As I said before, if we can come up with something creative, AV Hospital comes up with something, the committee can still work, they've been given direction by a three-two vote to work on something. If they come up with something, if we, I'll be willing to work with them continually still. If they come up with something, that's fine. I don't think it needs to be part of the motion. Right now, it's about a moratorium. As Mr. McEwen said, that moratorium can be shut off at any time.
I believe that all of the things that our mayor desires of working on can still occur with this moratorium in place, and that's why I'm going to second it.
Anyone have anything else?
No.
Okay, let's vote.
I was just going to say, last week, I had made a comment, and I said, when medical marijuana can be prescribed by a medical doctor, and they pick up their prescription from Burns Pharmacy. Well, the AV Hospital, if there, if, I'm thinking creatively, if there were a board of doctors who could weed out the ones that truly need it, no pun intended...
Smart aleck. Go on.
You just got that, Mr. Bozigan? Anyway, but that's the closest thing that I have seen, or I mean, heard, that I've said, okay, now you might have something there. And if there were, if there was a committee that continued to work on that, but I still think we need the moratorium until that's all panned out with Mr. McEwen. And if that's a possibility, that's the closest thing I've heard yet, that I would even go down that road.
Thank you.
Good. I think we're on the right track.
Let's vote. City manager, any announcements?
I have two comments, if I may. As a technical matter, the multi-specialty ambulatory care center that you approved today, the agreement will go before the Board of Supervisors, County Board of Supervisors, in the near future for approval. Second thing, notwithstanding the difficult issues, as the mayor pointed out, I like the way the mayor framed it in terms of there were a lot of leaps made today. But what I'd like the community to understand, with the community, this is the beginning of the path on a lot of these, energy, design implementation, economic stimulus, the convention and tourism bureau. We need to make sure that we implement these as good as the ideas and the plans are that are worthy of it. So we'll be working on those throughout this coming year to implement them. That's it.
Thank you. City clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you print, fill them out completely and concisely, so that if we do need to get in touch with you, we will have your information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time does start when you begin to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. You'll see three lights when you approach the podium. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. State law does prohibit the city council and the agency from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Okay, Donald Ritter. Donald Ritter?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I had a creative idea. I've been thinking about this for a while, I've spoken about it. Look, what we need to do as a city, we are always looking to put ourselves on the map, to be distinct, to show compassion and yet have control. We can do something no one else has ever done here, and this is how I would like us to do it. I want the city to run the dispensary. I want local doctors, who I've already spoken to, this is feasible, to be the stopgap. Now, look at what happens here. Sick people come to our doctors. A lot of sick people are going to come to our doctors. They're going to be waiting to see our doctors, they're going to be filling the hotel rooms waiting to see our doctors. We are going to put ourselves on the national map by getting growers that we will employ in the collective to produce medicine for these people, that we're going to sell at $5, $10 an ounce, which will have more sick people coming to Lancaster to fill the hotel rooms to wait to see our doctors. And we can have a model. When this thing goes full-blown legal, we are already in position to regulate it and make profit of it that is now going to fund these gangs. And I cannot stress that enough. You send all these people looking to buy it out onto the streets, and they're paying the gangsters. So let's think about that. And I volunteer to help you run it. So Merry Christmas to everybody, and I hope you have a Happy New Year as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. I'll see if I can get Mr. Smith to become the director. Okay, moving on. Councilmember Cilio.
Under Council reports, the Edwards Air Force Base Restoration Advisory Board are, representative there is our city's environmental engineer, Mr. Peter Zorba. In addition to the great job he has done for our own city, the entire Restoration Advisory Board understood what a great job he does and unanimously elected him to be the new public co-chair. There's a few other items in there that are available for your perusal, and I'm sure Mr. Zorba can answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you. Councilmember Marcus.
The air quality management district, the governor board, the governing board discussed the difficulties encountered during the recent station fire due to the greater-than-expected travel of finer pyro-generated particulate matter. As a result, the combination of the fire's enormous heat plume and local inversion layer. There was an approval of $95,000 in Carl Moyer State funding for the AVA QMD's voluntary accelerated vehicle retirement program, and while enhancing local air quality by replacing 20-plus older vehicles, less efficient vehicles with new, more efficient fuel and environmentally friendly vehicles. Also, I brought up the, one thing that's on my radar now, which are the in-home, in-garage pothouses in the valley, and just brought that up as a concern.
Council, Vice Mayor Smith?
I had to excuse myself from that meeting, so Councilwoman Marcus can get the report.
At the ABTA, the board approved a new fixed bus route in Lancaster, which will run a loop to the Antelope Valley College, Lancaster City Park, and the new University of Antelope Valley on Sierra Highway, which was really great. Also, the board gave ABTA staff direction on the joint powers agreement revision, and the schedule, the ABTA will schedule a strategic planning session in January.
Thank you.
I just asked that, even though it'll be sometime down the road, when the MAC, the multiple specialty ambulatory care facility is built, that we keep an eye on the bus routes and timing of the buses, as they'll probably be big users of the facility.
Have we done anything on looking into using the bus system on Sundays, where you change the routes so it's conducive to the churches?
I'd have to look in that. By recollection, they look at where the demands are, and there are demands on Sundays. I don't know the answer to that, I'll have to find out. I don't know if either of the members do.
Sure, Mark?
We could ask Randy Floyd specifically, you know, if, you know, what the calculations are and what they're using.
It just seems to me that we have all these churches with these bus programs, and I'm wondering, you know, just because they go to church doesn't mean they're not citizens. I mean, you know.
It's just the opposite.
Well, I know there's quite a few people who are regular attenders that do use the bus services on a regular basis.
Does it stop at the churches?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
Well, there's one that's diagonal across from the church.
Okay, great. Good. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments for the council?
I have a few.
I'm sorry.
Well, since last month, it's been quite a few things that have happened, and like you said tonight, this was one, one of the meetings that there's such a leap of what's happening here in Lancaster. But I just kind of was looking over the calendar today and thinking about some of the great things that have happened. And Pete Knight Veterans Home opened, and that's a cap, I mean, a jewel in our, or a feather in our cap. And it was a great ceremony, exciting, and that's a wonderful place. If you haven't seen that place, you need to go check it out for our vets. The Toys for Tots event was a lot of fun. I did the 1K with my three-year-old granddaughter, and we cheated. We turned back with the banana guy, so we came in like 12th place or something. But I know my grandkids had a great time. I've got another 11 and eight-year-old, and they had a wonderful time. So big thank you to the Marines, and Peter Zorba did a great job with that. Attended the Gavie, which celebrated there, is it Gavie? Gavie? Gavia, excuse me. Gavia celebrated their 10th year anniversary, that was a really great ceremony also. And, you know, they're doing a great job for our community. And I encourage all the businesses out there to go and check out that enterprise zone and see what it can do for their business. I attended a neighborhood watch meeting for the Shadowcrest Watchers, and I noticed that Mr. Barrios was here a little while ago. But that's, they have a website for their neighborhood watch, and that's how they, not only email, but they do a website, and they're doing a great job. And I know Shelley and her crew, along with the Sheriff's Department, is doing a great job of keeping our citizens informed of every latest threat. The Lancaster Christmas Parade was great, had a great turnout, had a great time. Chamber of Commerce did a great job. The Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission met yesterday, and we had a productive meeting. We continue to ask the Housing Authority to enforce their rules and regulations, and we have the full support of Supervisor Antonovich. But we are still going to continue to encourage the exposure of those that are frauding the Section 8 voucher program, so that those that truly need it and qualify for it can benefit for it, from it. And we are, it's brought up over and over again that we're targeting Section 8 recipients, and we are not. We are targeting those that fraud the program. And all we want to do is reduce the number of Section 8 voucher holders, so that it's a balanced program for the city of Lancaster. We're not asking any more than any of the other cities asking for. The LMBC also is asking for either a voucher holder or someone who has been a voucher holder in the past. What I'd like to see is a success story, someone that benefited for a certain period of time, and now are in, you know, full-time employment and independent of the program, and which is why it was originally created.
This is to serve on the commission?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yeah. And we'd like for them to apply for the commission, and anyone interested can apply online?
They can go online and fill it out. They'll have to sign it, so they'll bring it in, but they can get the application online.
Okay. And I just brought up something that I did see, and there was a special... And I just brought up something that I did see, and there was a special by A&amp;E, and it was called Pot City USA, which aired October 20th, and I asked Mr. Bozigan to make that available to the whole council. That was quite an eye-opener, and we do not want that problem here in the city of Lancaster. We've already got some, but I really, at the neighborhood watch, I expressed my concern that if anyone sees telltale signs of a pot home, a garage, or any facility that's being used, that it be turned in. And I know that Steve Knight, Assemblyman Steve Knight, has a great brochure. I gave some to Mr. Bozigan and to Shelley. And if anybody in Lancaster is thinking that maybe something like that's going on in their neighborhood, please call it in. We've got, call in the Sheriff's Department, call our tip line or call Wtip. And also, lest we forget, we recognize December 7th yesterday as the day of infamy. And, you know, there are still people, Americans, that relive that horrific day. And I just feel like we needed to mention that, and I don't want to forget that, and their great sacrifice for fighting for our freedoms and our troops that are fighting for our freedoms today. And with that, I will say, God bless you all, God bless Lancaster, God bless our troops and their families, and I wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Could we get somebody working on a turnkey website for the other neighborhood watches? That's an incredible idea.
Yeah, we can. A lot of neighborhood watches, what they use is Facebook or some of the other social media sites already that are out there because then they can broaden it beyond. But yes, we can certainly look at that and how best to do that. Either a turnkey website or helping them with Facebook. One of the things we're doing with neighborhood watch is we're going to augment some of, because Shelley and her crew have done a great job, but as with every department in the city, we're limited, so we're going to augment and dual task some of our other staff members to help with that. It's a great idea, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Marcus?
Sir?
You put in more work than the four of us combined. You've done a lot of stuff this month.
Well, you know, I love this city, and we are going places. I have never been so pumped up before. The staff does an outstanding job. City manager, I mean, you're all so proactive. Every time I come in and I say, you know, have you thought of this? They're already on top of it most of the time. So I can't say enough, I can't brag enough about Lancaster, and I am just, I'm just so thankful to be here. It's a privilege.
I think that's a good idea, that on the turnkey website, I think the turnkey website is Facebook, because that has, Facebook has the ability to automatically send out messages to everybody, you know, and update them. It can actually text them on their phone. So if they have their phone set up for that, and there's a burglar in the neighborhood, even if you're not home, you'll get a text message from the Facebook, and so it's really...
But we need to make that, I mean, I don't know how to do that on my Facebook. And so I'm thinking what we need is an ability so every neighborhood watch captain knows how to do that.
I'm thinking of a brochure or something, says these are the 12 steps in actuality where...
Wait a minute. What do you mean 12 steps?
Probably a misstatement, the 13 steps required to do this.
Or a 12-year-old.
Ashley, my daughter at Santa Barbara, they do a similar thing with the floors on their dorms, that's how they communicate, talk about issues that are happening and such. So I know it's, I don't know how to do it either, but I know you can do it.
That's how my students communicate across the room during class.
Yeah.
But I log on and I see them, so...
You let them text?
Well, they're behind, you know, can't see what they're doing on the computer sometimes, and they're going back and forth, so...
Okay, great. Okay. Pursuant to action taken by the City Council Redevelopment Agency on August 11th, 2009, there will not be a City Council Redevelopment Agency meeting on December 22nd, 2009. We are now adjourned until Tuesday, January 12th, 2010, at 5:00 PM. Carol, my day is done. Natalia did not get me dinner tonight, so when I get home, please feed me something. And I'm coming home.